Welcome to the Town of Situate Board of Selectmen Agenda for February 17th, 2015. At this time, I'd like to have an acceptance of, first call the meeting to order and second, an acceptance of the agenda.
Move, so move.
Move. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Good evening. Are there any walk-ins this evening? No walk-ins, okay. Moving on, we're going to change to a report from the Town Administrator. Tricia, good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
So, the first order of business is I have a couple of personnel appointments that I want to inform the Board of. There's three on your list, and I'll go in reverse order. That was an error on the agenda, and there are no police officers to report about appointments this evening. The second one from the bottom up is a fire captain. I'm pleased to inform the Board that I've appointed Patrick Riley as fire captain. He's been with the fire department since July of 2007. He's a paramedic, and he was promoted effective Valentine's Day. The process for choosing all command staff is basically what we followed for the chief of police, the fire chief, the deputy chief, captain, lieutenant, which is application and an assessment center to determine the strengths and weaknesses of our candidates. Because the fire department is a civil service organization, we actually get a list with individuals who are ranked on that list, and for one appointment, you have three people to choose from on that list. In this case, there were two candidates, and as part of my determination on appointing, I employed an assessment center for the candidates. So Patrick wanted to be here tonight. He is driving back from his, away from the weekend, and doubts with the traffic he will make it. So he gives his sincere apologies, and hopefully we can have him here later.
Go ahead.
And then the last, but certainly not least, is I'm very proud to tell you that I've appointed Alfred Elliott. Al Elliott is your deputy fire chief. Al has been, was appointed to the fire department in 1989. He was promoted to lieutenant in 1986, promoted to captain in 2007, and his effective date of his appointment as deputy chief was last Friday, the 13th. No Omen Al, but many of you probably know Al from the outstanding work he did working on the public safety building and leading some of the informational forums we had with the residents, and we've also kept him very busy on Friday, his first day, with this weather that we're having. But he's here, so deputy, just wanted to give you an opportunity to meet with the Board, and thank you for your service.
Deputy Chief, congratulations, and we're very honored to have you, and the town is better for it, so we appreciate it.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you, look forward to working with you.
All right, is that it?
Yep, for, okay, now we could, that segues nicely into storm update because deputy chief is working as our emergency management director this week and for the last several days, so I'll give my two cent update, and then deputy, you can chime in with the emergency management stuff. Once again, we've had a lot of weather starting over the weekend. I can't even remember anymore, I'm sorry.
Last one.
So we had an emergency meeting, emergency management meeting last Friday, declared a state of emergency effective for Saturday night at midnight, which was lifted at 3:00 on Sunday. Turned out to be a good idea because that's when the snow and the wind really started to pick up. We didn't need to open the shelter or ask for any voluntary evacuations. We didn't expect any power outages, and indeed, they were pretty nominal. But there's a lot of snow, and there's even more snow, and it's snowing now. Kevin Kelly and the facilities crew have been working really hard, checking and rechecking all the buildings. We have a couple of frozen pipes at the Situate Harbor Community Building, frozen pipes in the harbor master's office, which we were able to get thawed today. The roofs look okay, but obviously, they have lots of snow on them, but we check them regularly. There are little, a few concerns about the library roof, so Neil, Kevin has asked Neil to look at that this week. And mostly, a lot of drifts against windows and doors at the schools right now, but we have an opportunity to knock those down with thankfully, school vacation this week. I had the Board approve deficit spending of up to $700,000 and a snow deficit at your meeting two weeks ago. You'll see tonight that there's motions to vote another $450,000 in deficit spending, and that is just to cover last week, and hopefully will encompass what we incurred over the weekend. As we've said in a number of storm advisories and blasts to residents, this snow is so voluminous now that plows that we usually do private contracts with can't deal with the snow. We have to physically go in there with heavy equipment and loaders and move that snow out, and that happened all day today in the alphabet streets and the number streets, which were particularly bad. And that's the operation that's going to have to take place in some other parts of town, like the cliffs and Humrock. That's expensive, and we don't have lots of equipment like that. We pull the loaders off when we can from the transfer station, which is why there was a delayed opening yesterday. But it's going to be cold, the snow isn't going to go anywhere for a while, so we're just going to continue to incur costs and labor time. And again, I just want to thank the DPW. I'll leave the update for the public safety folks to deputy chief Elliott. So I think we're probably around the 1.2, 1.3 million mark right now. And as a result of that, after deputy gives his update, we need, I think, need to talk a little bit about town meeting. So that's all I had, chief, and then if you wanted to update on the other stuff.
Well, as you know, we're just recovering from Juneau when this storm hit, and all the department heads have been busy putting their numbers together. We did an initial damage assessment after Juneau. They've been working on putting their post-disaster assessment numbers together. We have a meeting with FEMA in Mima and Coastal Zone Management tomorrow at 1:00. We're going to go and do a damage survey to, so that they can, they can justify hopefully getting our funds refunded for some of the costs we incurred for the town. As far as this past storm goes, we started ramping up on Friday at the fire station, as well as the police department. They put their five-ton service in Humrock. That's their large troop carrier, can actually go through about six feet of water. We were concerned, we might have to rescue people from the north side of Humrock. They also have two Humvees available for us. We have the National Guard, we have two National Guard trucks in headquarters because we anticipated some moderate coastal flooding. We might have to do some evacuations. I'm pleased to say we didn't have to use the National Guard for the morning tide at 7:30. That was our big concern because of the, because of the high winds and the, and the high surf. We did let them go later in the day. We had a representative from the National Grid in the department all day. He was screening wire-down calls. We only had one wire-down call at Noel Lab in Harley Road, and we actually had no reported power outages in Situate, so we dodged a bullet there, I believe. And so now we're just recovering. The drifting, blowing snow has been a real challenge for the DPW and for our vehicles getting around town. We still have the chains on a lot of our trucks so that we can get down some of these narrow-sized streets and get around. We're dealing with a lot of narrow streets. It's taxing on our people. But we're responding, we're responding to multiple medical aides today. The hospital's very busy, they have them lined up on Fog Road waiting to get in, and people are in the hallways up there. So social hospital, it's really extremely busy. We made multiple transports today. We've dealt with a couple of gas leaks today, so you know, the responses are still continuing. Today, we had two troops from the 101st and Brodton Army National Guard in. We guided them around, and they dug up a little over 100 hydrants. We are asking residents to please, if you know where your hydrant is, to shovel it out. I know we've been distributing some hydrant lists as far as addresses, and I know Bill Sheehan's been working on a GPS system, overlay for the map, so that we have coordinates for all the hydrants. So we're going to try to get a hold of some GIS devices, so that if they're buried, we can tap in the GIS coordinates and locate them, you know, very quickly. They shovel, the National Guard, like I said, the Army National Guard shovel over 100 hydrants today. We're hoping to get them back tomorrow. We're in contact with them. We're asking people to make sure they have working carbon dioxide detectors in their homes. We're concerned about heating vents being covered up and carbon dioxide backing into the house. Carbon dioxide is a colorless, odorless gas. It replaces the oxygen in your blood, and it can put you to sleep, you won't wake up from it. So your only line of defense is to have working carbon dioxide detectors. So we're asking people to work with those, and we're just continuing our emergency responses at this time.
Deputy Chief, the tides, anything to be concerned for this week with respect to the higher tides?
Yeah, we do have some concerns with the tides later in the week. Earlier in the week, we were worried about a Wednesday or Thursday storm hitting the coast. Looks like we've dodged the bullet. We're getting a few inches of snow today, and it might be some flurries tomorrow. However, starting on Thursday, we are going to have an unusually high run of tides, 12-foot tide starting then. 11, 12-foot, 11-foot tides, 10-foot tides are going to last for about a week. We're most concerned about Thursday and Friday morning tides that are 12 feet. So if you live along the water, along the coastlines, even in the parking lot, you know, behind the middle off parking lot, a lot of times, there's water up there in Cole Parkway. Please don't park in those areas Thursday and Friday during the high tides, and people on the coast should be aware that they could have minor flooding in their areas.
Can I just add one thing? Also, not only was the National Guard, but I saw your guys out there digging out hydrants all day today, too.
Our guys have been out every day. We have engine three out. We even put the rescue out on the road. We're holding the ladder truck in quarters because a lot of the main streets are bare, and they have the chains on them, and we don't want to wear the chains out. I know the mechanic's going through a lot of cross links on our chains that we put on the tires so we can get around in the snow. So that was in course. Every other vehicle was out and shoveling hydrants. We did all of the cliffs today. We wanted to stay away from the alphabet streets and the lettered avenues because we know that the DPW is there trying to widen streets. We have further requests in with Mima for larger road widening, road widening equipment, so we're hoping to hear about that by the end of the week. Some of the streets in Humrock were narrow, but the DPW's done a great job in keeping them open and widened. And we also requested some one-way signs because we're considering at the time, as long as the streets stay narrow, to make some of the streets one-way. The signage is an issue, so we're requesting signs from the Department of Transportation. So those are the requests we have with Mima at this time.
One other point on the hydrants. Deputy Chief Elliott had a great idea, because at this point in time, you can't find your hydrant. You know, it's under a bank of snow. But if you go to Google Earth, you can go, actually go into your address, put it in there, and you can probably see about where the hydrant is, because the pictures there are not, not snowed.
Google Maps is a technology that if you go to their satellite view, there's a little man icon you can drag down to the street, and you can do a virtual walk of the street in good weather. They only really cover the main streets, they don't cover a lot of the side streets, which is an issue, but if you span left and right, if you're not sure exactly where the hydrant is, oftentimes, you can pick them up just from using that technology, and it's free, and it's kind of fun to do, too.
So it was a good idea. So if there's one out by your house, it's a huge help and helps yourself safewise, safety-wise to go dig it out. Are you saying that some are buried still? I thought, are they?
Yes.
We've dug them up, probably the fourth time we've had to dig them out, three weeks.
Fourth time in three weeks, we're going to start from scratch. And because of the high winds, we had an additional 12 or 14 inches of snow, but in addition to that, the previous storms, it stayed so cold, the snow is still very light. So I know the DPW is dealing with clearing streets time and time again. We're dealing with the same thing with the hydrants, the wind just covers over everything we've done, and it fills the streets, and as the plows go by, there's snow on the side of the streets, and again. We do flags on a lot of the hydrants. I know the water department's working on getting more flags so we can get all our hydrants flagged, but there are still a number of hydrants that are completely buried, which is why hopefully this GIS technology that Bill Sheehan's working on will help us identify the exact locations.
More?
Just two things. Deputy Chief, thank you, and I want to thank the residents, too, that are helping dig out as well, because certainly, I know people have done it five, six times, just like your men as well have done it. Just having conversations with some residents today, do you think it makes sense to reissue some instructions about the gas, the clearing of the vents and where gas meters are, because, because of the drifting, I don't think a lot of homeowners who aren't the primary caretakers, if you will, really understand where that, those meters and things may be, so I don't know if we can put another message out to educate the public.
The last storm advisories, we covered a lot of that information, so if you do get those advisories, you can go, you can.
They're still on the website.
They're still on the website. I know, if you go to the Columbia Gas website, they have a very, a very lengthy ditty on why it's important to clear your gas meters and how to do it safely. You don't want to take shovels and break the gas meters. Try to use a broom if you can, be very careful while you're shoveling around them. I know that the gas meters, when they're covered over, they have a pressure sense, regulating sensor, and that, the way they're designed is that they, they sample atmospheric pressure, and that relates to how high your flame's going to go in your appliances in your house. So it is important to keep them clear. And also, if we have a gas leak, we want to be able to access it and shut the gas off the house. We've got two gas leaks just this evening. I believe they're outside, glad gas leaks luckily. I know the gas companies responded to those with our firefighters.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief? Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
We'll look for rest of the week. So there's two motions that you have, one for the deficit spend.
Do you want me to read it, John?
Yeah, the, there's one that we just got, the 450.
Yeah, that's it. And the other one I'm going to give you after you do that one.
Motion?
Move to approve the incurrence of $450,000 liability in excess of appropriation as permitted by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31, with the approval of the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And the second one is not executive action that you have, but it would be a motion to endorse the chairman's decision to impose a state of emergency from midnight February 14th to 3:00 PM Sunday, February 15th.
So move?
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. O'Toole, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Good.
And the last item, under my report about the town meeting calendar, it should be no surprise that several boards and committees have had to cancel meetings, CPC, advisory, capital planning, your meeting at 6:00 PM to try and catch up on the stuff that you have. At this point, speaking today, it would be very, very difficult to meet all the requirements we have to meet for town meeting. That, just from a deadline point of view, but second, because I think we're going to need to revisit a few things in the budget we're using. I've recommended a lot of free cash to be used for the capital plan. We still have our threshold under our policy for the rest of this year, but, you know, we're deficit spending on the snow now. You've just, we're taking this money out of stabilization at the special that we're up to 1.4 million, and I think we'll have to revisit a few other budgetary line items. So I had Nancy mention it to the advisory committee Thursday night, spoke with Frank Judge about it today. I have sent an email to the moderator. I'm not saying it's a fait accompli and needs more discussion, but we, until we stop responding to these weather events, the business of the town is not moving forward, and so we might have to discuss that again at the next meeting. I know that Capitals missed one meeting, and they're trying to double up, and CPC has issued another meeting schedule from canceling, I think, two meetings, so we'll just have to see how stuff flushes out.
So is it your thought, Tricia, that maybe we consider, consider at least either a two-week delay and try to, would that be?
Yeah, I think something along that, and.
So somewhere in the end of April might be the timing that we'd be looking at it?
Yeah, and I'm sort of concerned about the state budget, too. You know, the governor has extra time to make his recommendations. He's pledged to, you know, not touch local aid, but clearly, the impacts to cities and towns and businesses throughout the Commonwealth are going to be impacted by this storm. So I tend to be, you know, cautious with the budget at this point, and I just, I think, you know, extra time might put us in a better financial position before we actually vote. Other than that, we're in the position of having warrant articles with a warrant that's posted that doesn't have a good monetary number in it, and I'm really loathe to go back to the days where there was a warrant with no number on it, and people were hearing it for the first time on the floor. So we'll just see, but I'm sure we'll be able to definitively make a decision at your next meeting.
Okay. So we probably don't want to do it during the April vacation week.
Yeah.
So after that.
It doesn't exist.
I think it's real important, what you just said, you know, for essentially the last three weeks, the town work has been at a standstill. Either people have not been able to get to the office, or everyone's been working on the weather issues in terms of storm and just security issues or safety issues. So, you know, I think people probably don't realize that, that everybody, even none of the departments, have been helping be resources for the storms as opposed to doing their regular jobs, so it's having an exponential effect on, you know, on the work for the town government, so.
The good thing is our town meeting's so early that even if we delayed a month, we'll still be with what everybody else usually has there, so.
Will we have to push back the election, though, as well?
That would be something we need to consider as well, so.
Well, we've already, we have pushed it back. Anyway, let's move on, folks, it's 6:25. We have a lot on our agenda. Tricia, anything else, or is that it? Thank you very much. Let's move on to the 6:10 presentation on the housing production plan. Karen Sonnerborg.
Sonnerborg.
Sonnerborg, I'm sorry. Housing consultant and Laura Harbottle. Is Laura here? Laura, come on up. Town planner to discuss it. Good evening, and welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Been about three years, maybe, last time you presented before us?
It was 2008.
Yeah, was it eight? Geez. Didn't seem that long ago.
I want to thank you for including us on your very busy agenda, and also, as I mentioned to the planning board, we met last Thursday, putting us so close to the front of the agenda, which is also much appreciated. This plan that is being submitted for your consideration is actually an update, an update of a plan that we prepared in 2008, of same kind of housing production guidelines. The initial plan had expired. We had an opportunity to update the demographic and housing and economic information to revisit strategies and production goals, and so this plan does somewhat reflect, even going back to the 2004 master plan, some information that the town has been focused on over a number of years. In fact, just the overall goal for housing that was included in the 2004 master plan is to provide housing that meets the needs of residents of all ages and income levels while preserving the town's historic homes and traditional neighborhoods, and we have continued to include that in this particular plan. And just, I really want to get in the highlights of a very comprehensive and detailed guideline document, but just to revisit the requirements for what is affordable housing, the definition that most people use is the one related to Chapter 40B, that if you are going to include a unit as part of the subsidized housing inventory towards that 10% affordability threshold under Chapter 40B, it has to meet a number of requirements. These same requirements apply to annual production goals that are part of the housing production plan, too. And it has to be a subsidized development, either that if you see direct local, state, or federal subsidies, or it's been approved by a subsidizing agency that made the project eligible for submission to the ZBA as part of the comprehensive permit application. 25% of the units must be targeted to households earning at or below 80% of area median income. Situate's in the Boston area, just an example for a household of three, that is $61,000. Sorry. Put it on, wouldn't hear, but you can still. So a household of three, that's $1,000. The alternative is that you'd have 20% of the units targeted to those earning at or below 50% of area median income. Other restrictions have to be in effect largely in perpetuity and monitored to ensure that the requirements in the affordable housing restrictions are enforced, and the units have to be federally marketed, not just kind of information outreach to locally, but also to the region and to those groups who might not normally hear about any upcoming affordable housing opportunities. However, you can typically reserve up to 70% of the units for those who have connections to the community in that they either live or work in Situate. So looking at what housing is affordable in Situate, and we're talking about sometimes the housing field, we talk about capital A affordable housing versus little A affordable. We're talking about capital A, meaning those units that meet all those restrictions that I went, just went through. Of Situate, 7,163 year-round housing units, 310 units, and 4.3% are considered affordable by this date towards that subsidized housing inventory. So the gap is about 400 units now to get to the state target, but that doesn't really account for growth in numbers of units, and the next decennial census is released, the year-round housing figure will increase based on growth factors. Should mention, though, here, that Chapter 40B has included an incentive for communities to do multifamily rental housing, such that if you have a comprehensive permit application for rental development.
All units.
All, 100% of the units count towards the subsidized housing inventory, even though only 25% are likely to be actually affordable. For homeownership development, only the 25% that are actually affordable count towards the subsidized housing. The document has a very significant housing needs assessment that looks at demographic profiles over a period of decades, and the projections, as well as economic profile and a housing profile, and from all that data, we have identified a number of priority housing needs that will then be addressed through the housing strategies that are included in the plan. Just to go over some of the documentation for these needs, almost one quarter of all households earn less than $50,000, and about 526 people lived in poverty, which is up somewhat from the 451 in 1999. Lowest-priced listing for a two-bedroom rental unit was $1,200, at a partisan income of about $54,800. That's assuming that no one's paying more than 30% of their income on housing, which is kind of the federal standard for affordability, and then we put in a utility loans, too, which is about $170 average a month to get at that figure. And this suggests, you know, there are people in the community that are vulnerable, because so much, so many of the units are homeownership, there is a need to, for subsidized rentals. There is an affordability gap of about $90,000 for those earning at the area median income. This is actually earning at Situate's median income, which is significantly higher than actually area median income. Like I mentioned, for a household of three, it's $61,000 for the area. It's over $92,000 for just Situate itself. So affordability gap is typically defined as the difference between the median-priced house and what a median-income household can afford, and the, that comes to $90,000. Median price was $480,000, and what a median-income household can afford, we estimated about $390,000. Since this was done, I just looked last week at the median income, the median house price as of the end of December, which is the latest released figure, and it's gone up to more than $490,000. So the affordability gap is in fact widening. And then also, if you consider the high-down payments that are required, now more 20% than it was a number of years ago, that effectively widens the affordability gap, because you've got to have that cash available, and then, you know, credit becomes tougher. And then, you know, credit becomes tougher. When you look at the affordability gap for those earning at 80% of area median income, it's $257,000, then over to, it's almost $270,000 now. And few properties on the market for less than $300,000. They were actually maybe a handful for less than $200,000, but they imagine they were extremely small and needed, you know, advertised with Cozy and TLC. So there's still a need for some first-time homebuyer opportunities. More than 1,441 individuals claim to disability, including 30% of those, and of those, 31%, oh, no, including 30%, 1% of those 65 years and older. So 31% of all those older adults in the community claim to disability. There are no assisted living units in town despite increasing elderly population. And just to give you an example, in 1980, those 65-plus involve 10.4% of the population. And that has increased by, 2010, 17.2%. And then, based on population projections from that Reciprocal Area Planning Council, it'll be up to over 29% by 2030. So also, there's, there are many more indicators of need in the, in the plan, but we did include a need for special needs housing, including more handicapped accessibility and/or supportive services. And then finally, almost three-quarters of Sitewood's housing was built before 1970, which suggests there might be lead paint issues that were prevalent on housing, houses that were built before 1978, as well as issues regarding failing septic systems, as well as deferred maintenance issues. So we have made this plan on our housing production. And just briefly, housing production was meant, it's actually subset of the Chapter 40B regulations, which were meant to provide greater local control over housing. And if a town has an approved affordable housing plan that meets all the state requirements and includes housing production goals of equivalent to half a percent of the year-round housing stock for Sitewood, that's 36 units, you have to have a housing needs assessment, and you have to have housing strategies to address those needs. Then you, with that approved plan, if the town can document that it actually created 36 units in any one year, it gets 12 months, which it does not have to really, let me put it this way, it can deny what it considers inappropriate comprehensive permit applications without or with very limitability for the del valver to appeal that decision. If you create 72 units, or 1% of the area housing stock, you have a two-year period where that's what they call certification is in effect. We carried forward a significant number of the housing strategies that were included in the previous plan, and even a number that were included in the master plan, under three main categories. One's building local capacity, second, planning and regulatory reforms, and third being actual development. And under local capacity, we included kind of a general strategy related to having a very transparent and inclusive process around any proposed housing initiative, really in order to gauge local leaders and the community in the process of decision-making and planning where possible. Also importantly, included a strategy on securing professional support. Different communities have taken different tacks in doing this, but I can say that the communities that really make the progress have had some staff support or consultant support. A lot of communities, particularly communities that have community preservation funds, are using some amount of those funds to hire consultants that will then support their efforts in implementing their housing production plans. We have a strategy in accessing new housing resources. Given that local resources are limited as far as CPA funds, town-owned property, housing trust funds, the idea is to really leverage those resources to the greatest extent possible. And we've included a lot of information on other state and federal resources to do that. The plan includes a strategy to create a property inventory. When we did the plan a number of years ago, we included a fairly significant list of the number of parcels that potentially might be suitable for some amount of affordable housing development, either owned by the town or by the housing authority. This strategy suggests that the town would take a good look at potential parcels and do some analysis, feasibility analysis, even using some CPA funds or housing trust funds to do some preliminary feasibility studies, and then in order to potentially develop affordable housing down the road. And encourage training for board committee members. The thing about affordable housing is the rules are changing, it seems, on a regular basis. And for any new board members who are coming on to the housing trust, for example, or even the planning board, have some general information about what it's like, and have some general information on best practices with respect to affordable housing and changes in regulations can be very useful. It also provides some networking opportunity, not just for board members, but also for staff people. Under planning regulatory forms, zoning, the plan recognizes that zoning is a very powerful tool in not only directing development to appropriate locations, but including incentives or mandates to provide public benefits, including affordable housing. The town has been progressive in including, actually, inclusionary clauses in some of its bylaws, to the common mind of the village sound overlay and hamaran overlay. This recommendation suggests that the town consider, it really implemented a town-wide inclusionary zoning bylaw, so that a certain percentage of units at any development of a certain size includes affordable housing, and that there are density bonuses or incentives for the developers to actually feasibly incorporate those units. And I understand that there was some discussion of the ocean side village development, for example, that was supposed to include some affordable units, and now it's all market. And this bylaw would ensure there would be some diversity within significant developments. Adopt housing guidelines. We suggested the town go through a process, maybe having a special task force, to really think about the types of developments that make sense for Sitewood, and to establish some priorities, so that developers who come into town kind of know, you know, where the town would like to develop, what types of projects, best will meet local needs and priorities. There are a number of towns that have adopted these, the policy guidelines, and there are some very good models out there. Allow residential developments under more conditions. This suggests that there, in the zoning bylaw, there will be more opportunities to develop different types of units in more locations. An example would be some kind of, a number of communities have developed these little pocket neighborhoods, kind of smaller houses built around common areas that fit into neighborhoods that had been really particularly good for after nasters and for families starting out. They include something like artist housing, and there are a number of other suggestions. And then we added something on the pending accessory apartment bylaw. This picture shows that, in fact, Sitewood does allow accessory apartments in commercial structures, which is a terrific thing. But the, and the bylaw also includes an affordability piece, which now is, doesn't make much sense since the state's basically changed the rules on how you count, what you need to do to count an affordable accessory apartment. So the plan does include some suggestions about amending the accessory bylaw, which means a number of public policy objectives, including further providing some small year-round rentals for ever-increasing smaller households, et cetera. We also have a strategy allowing starter housing on non-conforming lots. There are lots within town that don't meet all the dimensional requirements, but could be built on, potentially include some affordability in smaller housing units that should be looked at. And once again, the plan provides a lot of examples of reasonable models of how other communities have done this. Pursue tax titled properties. Because values are high in Sitewood, these opportunities don't comply very often, but when they do, instead of auctioning them off to private bidder, is to use that kind of, increasingly limited resources of land and to do an RFP, a quest for proposals to get a developer, builder, to build affordable housing. Also, opportunities to, for the town to really have control of what's developed and potentially use CPA or not some trust by subsidized. There is a suggestion about changing permit fee policies to waive some permit fees for affordable units. And to explore the use of Chapter 40R and 40S, which I understand the town is very actively pursuing at this point, and brava.
We were.
We were?
Yeah, I think we're, we've kind of backed off of that. At least the planning board did. I don't know about any of the others.
Well, just to put in a pitch, I mean, there, these, there are numbers, the 40R program, which.
Actually, we know it. We've gone through it, but I will say this, we're just not doing it for this upcoming town meeting. I mean, we're evaluating, and frankly, I think it's a great option for the town, but we're well aware of it, because we've been discussing it.
It takes some time to put that kind of zoning together and get all the state approvals.
It's just the planning and making sure the design and everything else, that's all.
That's right.
We're certainly supportive of it.
That's the town meeting. Okay. And then housing production, this is actually a required strategy in housing production plans, but to make suitable public property, including municipal property, available for affordable housing. This go-around, we didn't include a huge, you know, the Laurel list of potential properties that we did in the past prime, but gave some examples, one being the Stockbridge Road parcel that a number of four units are being developed, and the Driftway owned by the housing authority. Another example is, there's, the housing authority owns some property behind Central Park, that their Central Park development is a town-owned site adjacent to it, that once again could probably be developed for housing. And support private development in line with local guidelines, going back to preparing housing guidelines, really trying to work with for-profit and nonprofit developers on projects that will meet the housing policies that the town has put forth in guidelines. And to support new infill housing in existing areas, either small developments, or group homes, or habitat houses, where they make, where they make sense in existing neighborhoods. And then convert existing housing to affordability. I know that the housing trust had been doing some real work on this, and there's one unit so far that's included in the subsidized housing inventory. The plan includes a couple of different alternative ways of actually converting existing housing for consideration, but it's not the, it's not the high-volume program, but it does sometimes meet group and local needs. And next step, based on any comments, we'll make final changes to the reduction plan. We've asked the planning board for approval, and asking the board's Lechman for approval as well. Both approvals are required in order to submit the plan for the state. The state typically takes 90 days to review the plans, but they've been faster recently. They've really sped up, so it's not quite as long a time period. And that's it. So, is there any questions or comments?
Questions from the board?
Nope.
No, it's great. I have to say, you covered a lot. This, it's kind of exciting, because the numbers do not include some of the projects that have been passed, but have yet to be actually put in the ground, and some of them in the process. So that 400 number, although it's somewhat unattainable, considering the number will keep getting further and further out of reach with Stockbridge and some of the other projects being proposed. Could take a big bite out of the Stockbridge. I forgot exactly, what's the number for, is it 60 or 70? 74. So it's all going to be 74 units, because they're apartments, so it's a percentage of 100%. So now you get down to like 300 and something. Little by little, you know, you can knock that number down. This is great.
It's a challenge.
It is. Any questions from the audience? Anybody? All right, so the next thing then is to have it finalized, and then come back to us. We'll review it in final time, and then approve it, same with the planning board, correct?
Yeah, at this point, though, I mean, if the, based on any of your comments, the planning board comments, we've made any changes to finalize it, but in the absence of any comments, it's pretty much fine, isn't it?
Good. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
This is good stuff. As Rick Maravita. It is. All right, going to move on to the next agenda item, which is a 6:50 discussion on Heritage Days. Niko Offensekko, the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, I believe those individuals are in the hallway. Maybe.
Can you ask?
Yes, if they could come in, the Heritage Day crew. How do I get that split screen back? Oh, thanks.
They're having trouble with their power point, and they very wanted to know if they could come first. They asked us if we could switch with them, because they're not quite ready.
How's everybody feel about that? All right? Fine with me. All right, library, come on up. Jesse. So we're going to skip over the 6:50 discussion on Heritage Days. We're going to go to the 7 o'clock update, library building project final design. Joe Sullivan, I know you're here, Joe, there you are. And Dateless, library project manager, and Jesse Finney, the library director.
Yeah, I hate that. I had guys talking, everything else, I had no idea where it was. Just go to the radio. Yeah.
I'm just hoping the connection works here.
It's going to get worse, too.
Should be this simple.
Nothing's simple. Should be, but. Oh, yeah, that's simple. There you go.
It works. Thanks for having us.
Joe, Jesse, I forgot your name, and I apologize.
That's okay. Conrad Elo with Odin's Elo Art Director.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us again.
So now we're here for the final design, right?
Yeah, we basically, a few weeks ago, we brought first pass to you, and we had a lot of questions in, which was, we took a lot of it to heart and met with as a group, and we, I think we identified and addressed a lot of those issues. Tonight, we're going to show you where we're at. The good news is we're on budget with. The good news is we're on budget with design. We have some, they call it value engineering, but there's some changes in some of the interior scope to try to reduce the cost, to make sure that we're within our budget constraints out there on the end. But I'll hand it over to Conrad. I'd like to have him go through the design with you and then answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Joe. Conrad?
Great, thanks. So it's been about three months, I think, since we met with you in mid-November. We've been refining the design, as Joe says, since we last met. We produced a, what's called a design development set, completed in early January. It was priced by two separate cost estimators, one of whom was Dataless Projects, your OPM, and then one was from our design team. And both estimates came within almost $50,000 of one another and within $100,000 of where we need to be relative to the $12 million total budget. Of that $12 million total project budget, 9.1 is really the construction budget for the job, not including a construction contingency, which is carried separately. So the good news is we were within 1% of the budget, a little bit on the high side. And so what we've done over the last week or so is working with the library staff. We've come up with a list of value engineering ideas, sort of low-hanging fruit, things that don't really change the design intent. We're well over the 60,000 or 75,000 that we're over. We've got about, we've targeted about $110,000, $150,000 worth of savings. So we feel we're under that budget and on track as we look forward. This is really a moment in time in a much longer, longer process. We've got about two and a half months left before the bid documents are issued. There'll be a two-month bidding period awarding a GC the contract and then construction shovels in the ground by about July, right after the 4th. 13 months of construction. It's kind of a very nice construction window. It really starts in good weather and it sort of ends in good weather, so we actually captured two summers as part of the construction period.
You don't want winters?
We're trying to have it, at least a shell up for winter.
So then move in at the end of summer 2016, an opening day right after Labor Day 2016. So we're on, we're on track for this schedule. It is a little aggressive. It's been aggressive since the beginning, but we have an obligation, given the state, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, we have a next disbursement of money that needs to happen, come out sometime around May 1st, and they've sort of given us that deadline of having the project out and due on May 1st.
We're in constant communication with them, too, giving them an update of where we're at. They've been very helpful with their comments.
We had some meetings this morning with the planning board and building inspector, and we're just embarking on that town approvals process as well, so that's ahead of us over the next couple of months. Quick design review, some of these images, I think, will be familiar to you. There's not much in terms of the basic design has changed since we last presented. 25,000 square foot library on two floors. Currently, we're adding a little over 7,000 square feet to that, so the total square footage of the new library will be just over 32,000 square feet. A reconfiguration, excuse me, of the parking lot, there's about 55 parking stalls there now. The new lot will be about 105 spots, so a significant upgrade, but not a significant increase in paved area. It's just a much more efficient layout of parking in that area. Obviously, the planning board is very sensitive to some of the kind of stormwater issues. We're working with them on some specific details. The plan is largely the same as you saw last time. This is the upper level, showing the two new additions, which sort of go off the north and east sides of the building, sort of towards Branch Street. Good news is, this is a big site, we're well within the building setbacks, there aren't any real zoning issues to contend with here. A much larger adult area on the upper floor. The back part of the building will be where the children's wing of the library is now, will be a staff-centered area, great sightlines throughout the building. I'll just point out a couple of renderings that are associated with key areas on the upper floor. This is the, there's a big open space in the current library, but this, we're kind of elongating that, expanding it and top lighting it with a new lantern element, and also putting a big opening in the floor, which activates the lower level, which currently right now is very underutilized, a lot of storage down there. So this is a rendering of that sort of initial view one gets when they come into the library. Much more open, low stacks in the central area give great sightlines throughout the building, so there'll be a lot better sense of where you are, sense of orientation, a sense of that park-like setting that the library is in, from within the building. Some other key rooms, just packing up here. Just off of that central area, on the west side of the building is a gallery space, sort of local art can be displayed there, but it's kind of a nice lounge seating area, comfortable seating with good views, again, out to the site. And these provide sort of more intimate seating gathering spaces outside of that grand central space. There's another important room on the opposite side of the double-height central area, that's the local history room. This is overlooking or adjacent to a cover, outdoor covered porch on the second floor, so that'll provide a kind of nice venue for research. This, this room, we hope, will not be as kind of plain vanilla as this rendering shows, that it, we're hoping it has a lot of situat artifacts, and there's a lot that the, a lot of the great artifacts the library owns that will hopefully line this room and make it feel like a real situat history room. And again, it's overlooking this covered porch and the park, the lawn areas to the east of the building. Down on the lower level, pointing out again, the additions on the north and east side of the building. The main program going in the addition on the north side of the building is a new sort of community room, program room for the library. This will be used both during library hours for library functions and a variety of functions, but also can be a key meeting room for the town after hours. It'll have its own independent lower-level entrance, similar to what's there now, but it'll be a much improved, feel more public, not feel like you're entering into a sort of basement area. That after-hours suite includes some public restrooms and a sort of catering kitchen, storage and AV. Seats 150 people. These do also have windows to the outside, so as you come along Branch Street, if there's an evening meeting in there, it'll be a space that you'll, you'll get a sense that something's going on in the library, because it's actually out there facing the street. Children's and teens program, in addition to the community room, are sort of the big components that are activating that lower-level, great sightlines. A lot of interior glass, which opens up the views across the building from various spaces. This is just a snapshot at the bottom of the central stair as you come down from the main space, looking down the hallway towards the new community room and into the children's wing, the teens wing is just off to the left. On the outside, and one of the things that, since we've met with you, we've, we've tried to take to heart your concerns about the wood cladding. I think, Mr. O'Toole, you were particularly concerned about-
Maintenance issues and so on.
Right. We were concerned about the cost of brick. No dispute that brick is, lasts 100 years and frankly, the brick on this building is in great shape after four years. We did some cost analysis of this and we've determined that within the budget that we have, we can afford brick on the main parts of the building. That having been said, we still have wood elements on the building, and so we think that balance of brick and wood is very important to the composition of it, but we've gotten out more brick, and so-
And the wood is basically the side porch?
It's sort of the side porch area would remain wood, the eaves, the soffits, the little details on the building would remain wood. And these renderings, a little washed out, but basically the main mass of the building extending out from the existing brick would be a brick Flemish bond extension under that longer roof. So these are just some views. This is the entry-level approach, again, with the elongation, you see the brick emerging there. This is from Branch Street. And the east facade here, which still shows that porch element with the wood cladding. In addition to adding more brick to the composition, we've, we've looked carefully at the wood and we've chosen Alaskan Yellow Cedar, which is the highest grade of the cedars, it outperforms white and red cedar by a, by a large margin. We've also increased the thickness of the wood from 3/4 inch to 5/4, to sort of rigid resist the checking, and we've added a sort of an eco-wood treatment, which helps with UV protection, preserves sort of the longevity of the wood. And we think you'll get a great service life out of, out of even the wood elements, but obviously with more brick, the predominant enclosure is brick veneer. So that's, that's where we stand. Again, it's very similar to what you saw before, but that's, and that's probably one of the major design changes we've made since we last met with you, is to introduce the brick to the larger composition. That's it.
Questions from the board?
Roof pitch remain the same?
Same pitch, that's on the building now, that's right. And we're preserving as much of the existing framing of the hip roof that we can. We're taking that old cedar shingle roof off, it's way past its life. In fact, there's water infiltration over at the library right now, some ice damming in the soffits. There's going to be a continuous layer of rigid insulation on the outside of the roof sheathing, there'll be cedar breather, a whole different technology than what was available 40 years ago.
The insulation is negative from that one.
Right.
So be, this whole envelope will be much tighter than currently.
And you're quite sure there isn't any hazardous materials in there that are going to have to be addressed? Because in the, I think I saw earlier, there wasn't any money carried for that, just 40 years, it's right around the time.
Yeah, it's sort of on the border of lead paint, asbestos, wearing products.
I've engaged a couple of firms to give us numbers on just quick evaluation of certain, and just some test samples here and there, just so that we're not caught off guard on the chain to it. So we'll have that done before the contract documents come out.
Okay, great.
Any other questions?
See, only concern is, so there's no problem in terms of the state money, in terms of changing the design with this and going with this plan as opposed to the other plan, where this one's, the other one was more of an addition, a big addition, where this is more of a redesign or whatever. But there's no concern whatsoever with?
That's, that's correct. You know, the MBLC wants to see all of the building program elements that were in the original grant, so everything that we said that we would have, the teen room, the program room, the additional parking, things like that, those have to be in there and they'll be, they'll look for those at every single point. So if we all of a sudden said, you know, we really don't want a teen room anymore, or, you know, we're going to do away with these offices, they would, they would say, you know, they would have something to say about that. But since the program hasn't changed, it's actually not all that uncommon with libraries going through this process to decide at this point to modify the design.
And we're in touch with them as a group throughout the process. They're, every time we issue a drawing set, it goes to them for review. They've seen this design, they're supportive of the design, and actually, they, we continue to get feedback from them. There are certain minor modifications that they ask for along the way, and we're, we're certainly in touch with them throughout the process.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Hi, I just want to say thank you for holding all those public hearings and for making that adjustment on the exterior. Just in a short snippet, were there any other adjustments that you made that came as a result of some of the feedback that you got from the residents and us? I just-
You know, not so much. We were able to connect with, for instance, there's a memorial garden out front, we were able to connect with that family and they're actually really pleased with what's going on and we're going to work with them to sort of re, you know, relocate that garden. You know, we made connections with the abutters and sort of, you know, made sure we were on the same page about that. A lot of the feedback that we received at the public forums really focused on the exterior. Also, you know, a lot of people have questions about things like stormwater and things like that, which we are addressing, you know, with the site design.
Yeah, as a follow-up to those meetings, there's another meeting we're going to have with the immediate abutters, and there are some details that we're working out in terms of plant screening and how we're dealing with drainage along those, along those property edges. So there's, there's a little follow-up that we plan to do in the next month with them.
And the other good news is DPW actually notified us that they are going to have the new water line installed on Branch Street for the library's use. So that actually eliminated a fire tank that we were going to have to have because of the condition of the water line that consisted. We'll still need a fire pump, but it reduced the cost significantly overall. So, look into that as well, we'll coordinate more with them.
I think the design looks great. I mean, I, I know the thing, maybe Jesse, you can maybe, some people expressed concern saying, well, originally the plan was an add-on and we voted on that, and now people are saying, well, this wasn't the plan that was given to us, that's why we voted it. You know, what's our response to people, you know, who have that concern?
Well, you know, it was always a renovation, really, of the whole facility, just because all of the facility was going to be gutted to just, even, it was not nearly as drastic to the remainder of the library as this is. You know, it was this sort of big addition, but it was going to tweak the interior of the remainder of the library and everything was going to be gutted in terms of electrical and, you know, there was going to be a new roof. They just weren't going to make as significant changes to the physical layout of the rest of the interior. But I think, you know, what I've told people is, you know, we're still getting the exact same program that we, that we requested for this design, so every element that the town wanted, that we did surveys for and that we, you know, took public feedback for during the grant process, all of that is still part of the design. And just personally, from a management standpoint, I think that this building is going to be so much more easily manageable, especially considering that a staff that's functioned on, you know, one level for, you know, almost 30 years, is now going to be functioning on two. So I really think in a lot of ways, we're, we're getting more with this design, a lot more really.
Yeah, the use of the building today, from the original design that the town had visually seen, the program needs to complete the entire renovation of the building. It's not just a portion of it, where they add in a big addition, to try to gain access of light from the natural light from the outside. I think Conrad's team actually incorporated a total renovation of the building with some modified additions on there, incorporated a lot of natural light just to this design. So I think the program needs, needs a map, but I think building use is that much better, I mean, overall.
I think the design is great. I think, you know, putting in the, I don't know what you call it, the lighting at the top of the, the-
The lantern.
The lantern, I guess you could say. Certainly will, will generate a lot more natural light, just going to save electricity, but also make it look nicer and it opens up the interior. Externally, looking at it, you've taken a model 70s building and kind of made it much more friendlier in design than it originally was designed for, so I think that's, that's great. Thanks, O'Toole. John?
Just one more question, probably directed to Tricia. Tricia, will this be under Kevin Kelly's, this project tool oversee it or will it be maybe-
The building commission?
Okay, but will Bob Vogel be, you know, not a committee, but, you know, the town employee, will we oversee it?
Mr. Sullivan's job is, he's the owner's project manager.
So, okay.
So they get paid a sum to ensure that they're representing the town's interest in the construction.
So the answer's no, Kevin Kelly or Bob Vogel will oversee that? All right.
It's the public, it's the public building commission and Jesse's a member of that, and I believe Karen?
Karen.
Karen, yeah, as am I.
And an owner's project manager is required.
I know, just like the other projects, right.
And we'll, we'll see the project from, obviously, the design, right through the final term, the key handover, and then, we don't go away typically presenting follow-up issues or callbacks, we typically will respond.
Marty?
Yeah, just a quick question. So basically, it looks like, basically 1st of July, but the 7/6 is a pre-construction conference. When do you, when do you think you'll physically break ground?
Middle of July.
Middle of July.
It takes six weeks to get, six to eight, I say six weeks, but six to eight weeks to subcontractor bids, general contractor bids and- to subcontractor bids, general contractor bids, and contractor work.
Gotcha.
The last note I have is that we did send an RFP for the temporary facility. We did receive a proposal for it. It's under evaluation right now, and I'm working with Tricia on evaluating that, coming up with terms for the displacement of temporary facilities. It's great news.
We opened the bids, what, two weeks ago?
Yeah, two weeks ago.
Joe hasn't even been able to say hi to me, which he literally tried to do.
But things, it's within, you know, the scope is going to meet all of our programming needs, so it's going to work out pretty good.
It's exciting. It's a great, it's a first project. And obviously, completing at times is helpful because of the cost, and of the cost if it runs over, and also coming in on budget is critical, so I appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you, Tricia.
Thank you.
All right, we've got to go back to the 6:50 discussion on Heritage Days. Are they still ready? Are they still trying to? Everybody? Get it away.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Jesse, could you ask if Heritage Days wants to come back?
Mine does very good. What's that?
It'll look like an art museum.
Yeah, right, it looks nice.
Okay. Hey, Joe? Was that a good bid?
Oh, yeah.
Ready to award?
Right, then I'll make sure I try and give them. What I'll do is I'll have to notice.
Our presentations tonight.
I know, I know. Are they coming in next? Are you helping them out, Bill?
All right, well, they can vote to award.
Do I still need to?
Oh, all right, okay. All right, I didn't know who you were referring to.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. That other person, I don't know if it's a candidate. So I was, we asked to see.
You see the look on? Hmm, I know. I looked over, saw Tony, and Tony didn't know he went to Charlie.
Heritage Days is going first.
We'll do it. I evaluate, I give a sheet on it.
Okay, good. So it met those.
All right, so tell you, we'll go with Heritage Days, all right?
Yeah, they don't know. What's that?
Nico, you all ready?
No, I don't think so. Oh, yeah, I don't know.
It's going to be a while.
So, you need to take it now, because this is like 35 minutes, and this is 10 minutes.
Tricia, I got it. We're coming next, okay?
Yeah.
So Nico, you're up right now, okay? And...
Sorry for the delay, guys. We have a PowerPoint presentation, but it's in the wrong format as always, and Bill was kind enough to help us try to get it squared away, but we're just going to go now.
Don't worry, we'll be fine.
I've got a couple things for you, and I'll show you some other stuff as we go. I believe you guys all already got a packet.
Yes.
So you have that. So as an addendum, I believe I sent an email out yesterday from our conversation with the police chief.
Thank you.
And this is the final piece tonight, which is a copy of our demo. This is not real. It's a demo master schedule, which we'll be talking about in just a couple minutes. Essentially, and I apologize again for not having the PowerPoint up, but essentially, there's a couple of things that we'd like to go through tonight. The main thing is that we want to revamp Heritage Days this year. The good news is, we're going to talk about summertime tonight instead of winter, so that should take everybody's mind off of things for at least 10 minutes. So in August, we have thousands of people that descend on Cituit. In the past, say, 10 years of the 30, 40, I think it's 47 years that we've been doing Heritage Days now, we have tried a few new things here and there, and we've moved the stage, we've tried tweaking the crafts, we've tried tweaking the layout a little bit. We've done a piecemeal, and the experience that we've had lately is that that piecemeal approach doesn't seem to be working. Every time we try something else, it seems to collide with something else in the event. It collides with the police plan, the parking plan, the traffic plan. And what we're doing this year is essentially just going right from the bottom up. Now, that doesn't mean we're redoing the whole event. Most of the event as a shell will still exist the way most people know it, but what we're going to do is what we've called "level up" the entire event. I'd like to introduce who's here with me tonight. Alice Collins is the lead singer and gentleman that runs the Alice Collins Band, which has recently been named, I believe, the top band in New Hampshire. Brian. Houlihan is the owner of the Galley Restaurant, Bia's in Cohasset, and Tinker Sun in Norwell. Steve Smith is a Grammy Award-winning recording artist who lives in Cituit and is going to be helping us as well. As you guys know, there's two major pieces to Heritage Days. There's the music festival, and there is the Heritage Days, what we'll call the crafts festival. Those are actually one event, but over the last 10 years or so, they've really started to feel like two different events that happen on the same weekend. And that has essentially become a challenge and a problem for a number of reasons. Unfortunately, Jerry couldn't make it tonight. He did want to be here. And Burbine was going to be here from the Chamber as well. She couldn't be here because of the snow, so I apologize for that. Essentially, what we're doing is we're taking everything back to square one, putting it back together as one event, designing it properly with a better safety plan, police plan, and everything from the bottom up, and then adding a lot of pieces to it in those departments that really class up the whole event. And what I'd like to do in just a couple of minutes is to sort of go through that. You guys have a packet which outlines a lot of those changes, as well as the things we're going to be asking for this year. But let me just kind of go through things really quickly here, and as you guys don't have the PowerPoint presentation, I'm just going to kind of run through it as we go. Thank you. The first thing that we want to do is talk about essentially the quality of the feel of what we're trying to do. We are rebranding this event. We've done a lot in Cituit lately with rebranding this town. We've done a lot with rebranding the harbor. We've done a lot, not just as the Chamber, but as the harbor merchants, as the town's administration, to try and put together this town in a way that really brings things to the 21st century. From the iPads in front of you on the desk tonight, you know, when you look at this room on TV, it gives you a feel. When you look at a picture of a crowd in a concert stadium, it gives you a feel. When you walk into Heritage Days in the past few years, it doesn't necessarily give you a feel. The crowd hasn't been driven to certain places, like our businesses. The crowd hasn't been organized and motivated to accomplish certain things, like crowd control, and those are some of the things that we intend to do this year. The quality is something I want to speak to that's going to really reverberate throughout the whole thing. I think everybody here knows me through one capacity or another, through the town. I'm involved with the duathlon, I'm involved with the race for Cituit, I'm involved with the PTOs in town, I'm involved with sports leagues. And whenever I work in town, hopefully you guys would agree, that there are three major things that I really focus on. Safety of the people or the kids that are involved, the quality of the production and the feel of those events, and going back to the roots of the town and making sure the town actually gains from that. I will stand by that in past events, and I will stand by that here. Most of the time in the summers, I'm not around a lot, and I have not been involved in Heritage Days in this kind of a way before because I'm not here. This year, I decided to come along with these guys and actually really take charge of the event to make sure that quality shows up. The police plan is something that I want to talk about. I did meet with Chief Stewart a couple days ago. We've been rescheduled four times with Chief Murphy due to snowstorms, and I apologize, he's on vacation this week, so we just couldn't pull that together. But Chief Stewart and I had a long discussion. The basic outline, which I'm happy to answer questions about at the end, is that there will be a number of major changes to the logistics and layout of the event, which I think really not only class up the event, but they actually make it a safer, more productive event, and they're going to drive business into our local shops instead of just into the crafters that come from all over Massachusetts and New England. We want that tax money here, we want that tax base here. We spent a lot of time in the last few years talking about that. As a Chamber, we want to really focus on delivering that. There are a couple of major things that we're going to be asking for. I don't expect a full vote on those tonight, but I do want to make sure they understand what we're talking about. The first is stage location. Right now, we have one stage. The stage is on Otis Road. It is not an ideal location, in our opinion, from my discussions with the chief, and I think from some of the discussions I've had previously with some rooms of selectmen and some other people in town administration, it's not really an ideal location currently for anybody. The main reason that it's on Otis Place is not necessarily important, but it has a lot to do with the fact that in the past, Jerry has wanted to have the stages close to his music shop to have a green room for the performers. I can tell you that with the kind of talent that we have here tonight that performs on stages in Dubai...
I want to go to Jerry's green room.
Hong Kong, and India, anywhere else in the world, we don't necessarily need to have a green room that's 42 feet from Jerry's music shop. No offense to Jerry, he's going to be working with us still, but we can do this with the placement of a stage in a different location. What we'd like to propose this year is to actually have two stages, and I can discuss that at length later if you'd like, but the reasons for that is, number one, we're going to drive traffic from stage to stage, and shows are going to alternate. That means you don't have setup time in between shows, crowds don't disperse in ways you can't control. They move from place to place, which means they actually get up, go, and sit down, which means the police actually understand what's happening. It means the schedule, which I know you guys are really interested in, is very precise, very organized, and we will have stage management that is going to be essentially to the minute, not to the hour or day. That's one major change that we're going to be able to perform this year. The Jerry stage, we'll call it, the normal stage, is going to be moved, in our ideal scenario, to Cole Parkway off-street. So I apologize for the lack of PowerPoint, but if you look at this section, which outlines the harbor a little bit, here we have Front Street, here we have Cole Parkway, here we have Otis, and here we have the roundabout on the backside near the Harbor Masters, the gazebo, et cetera, lobster ramping here. We would propose to put the first stage back here, not on Otis, not on Cole Parkway, but behind the Corner Island near the movie theater, which is the three spots that are the temporary 30-minute parking spots. That way, it can be set up at a later time. We don't have to take up as much, as many days in advance of the event. We will also have a second stage, which means if we have delays in setting that up, we can use the first stage for the morning events while we're still doing that. The other thing that we can do is we can keep Otis Place open the entire time. That's something that's key to the police plan changes, is that we will be able to keep Otis Place open at least through Saturday morning, and the way we're hoping to do it, we may be able to keep Otis Place open completely to traffic, car traffic, through the weekend event. That's something that Chief Stewart and I are still working through, so that is sort of pending. But being off the street, we will have access to Cole Parkway and Otis Place for normal traffic all the way through Friday night traffic, and that's something that we haven't been able to do in years. The secondary stage would go opposite in the back. Not only does this allow us to move people in this area better, like we've discussed just now, but it also allows us to move the primary area of Heritage Days to Cole Parkway instead of Front Street. Front Street right now is two long rows of tents, as we all know. It gets very congested with thousands of people walking through there, and we're still trying to perform normal business for our restaurants like the Galley and Reva. We're trying to perform normal business at CVS and Dunkin' Donuts, and all our little shops up and down the harbor. And when that happens, our businesses rightfully sometimes feel like they can't get the value out of all these people that are right in their front door. We're not proposing to kill Front Street as the location of the event. We're proposing it to make it secondary. The focus of the event is going to be back here. We're going to have these two stages. The secondary piece that we proposed that's in your packet is a main tent. Instead of just a chamber tent that's going to be 12 by 12 or 10 by 10, like all the other crafters' tents, we're proposing something in the range of a 20 by 40 or maybe even slightly larger main tent, and again, I'll show you a picture in a moment, that is high-class, it's quality, it has lighting, it has electricity, we're going to be able to play classical music, we're going to be able to have private function for VIPs or ticketed customers, which allows us more opportunity to raise money for our event and for the town. All these types of things, and most importantly, communication. It allows us to draw everybody to the back lot, it allows us to congregate, focus on things, and it allows us to have microphones on stages and in the tent that can announce things like sponsors, announce things like safety plans, announce things like when things are closing, when things are opening, when the next show is, when the raffle auctions from our, you know, our shops, our local events. So all these things are things that we don't do now on one stage that's small, that doesn't have the capacity and the flow and timing. This will be things that we can do with two stages and a main tent. One final note on the second stage. The second stage is a professional stage. I will show you a picture, and again, I apologize, it should have been bigger, but that second stage is going to be, thank you, is going to be a professional race stage. Compared to the stage that we have now, this is actually a picture of one of the two stages that we're talking about. And that stage is on a truck. It comes in, it drives in, it plops down, and in approximately four hours, give or take, it's up, running, loaded, ready to actually play music, which means we don't have to set up on Wednesday, we don't set up on Thursday. We can set that up Friday afternoon or evening and be ready for Saturday morning. And that's something that's a massive change from our previous logistical plan.
So Nico, is there not going to be any parking back there?
Correct, correct. But I did speak to the chief at length about this. In the past, the real parking that we have is limited to a handful of spots, and those get gobbled up by the carnival trucks that get parked there, and they get left there for the whole weekend. There are maybe a handful of boaters that sneak in, and then they leave their cars there for pretty much the whole weekend because they can't get in and out very easily, and then they end up getting taken by the condo association, people that don't have a secondary spot for their cars, and leave their cars there. What we're going to propose to do instead is to have the lot over here, which is by Mountain One Bank, the smaller lot that a lot of people park in, say, for Halloween. We're going to propose to make that lot an actual manned lot, and it's going to be Cituit only, meaning you're going to be able to provide a Cituit Beach sticker, a dump sticker, a proof of whatever you want that shows you live in town, and you will be able to come in and park there, or handicap stickers will be able to park there. That will allow people that are driving in to shop at our own businesses, that want to go to the dry cleaner, that want to get their haircut at Rocco's, that want to go to the village market, or want to go to the bank on Saturday morning, to have some access to spots that they don't currently have, because those spots get gobbled up now and they get wasted for the whole weekend. So the other thing is that on Front Street, another major change that we're proposing is to take two rows of tents now, which takes the whole street up, and as I think you'll agree, is a safety concern at times. And we propose to take it down to one row of tents, which would be in the northbound lane, so the Reva side of the street. That lane would still be filled with tents, that sidewalk on the CVS side would still be filled with tents, people, traffic, pedestrians. The southbound lane would not necessarily be open to cars because it's a safety concern that the Chief Stewart really fell strongly about still, but it would be open to more pedestrian flow, which means it's a more open venue and concourse. It would be a safer concourse, and most importantly, it would be open to be shut down on a moment's notice for ambulance, fire, EMS support, so that we could get a fire truck, full-size, all the way down Front Street if necessary, within a two-minute lockdown when police call it out and get people off.
The follow-up on that, Nico, is then to say that instead of having it double up, then expand it from Conway Building down to Brook Street?
Well, this was actually the chief's idea. Right now, it goes from about the Conway office, Dr. Price's office, past Rockland Trust, and it goes down to Allen Place, which blocks off Otis to traffic. You can't drive through there. We propose to bring it back to Otis so that you could have both police and safety, as well as regular traffic on a police-monitored situation, come through there, which would allow them to come up Otis through Front Street and get to the Millworf parking lot, the Marina's, the backside of the movie theater, the Chinese restaurant, et cetera, which is a private lot, and it's important to make sure that has access. In the past, that has become a problem because, to protect their own traffic lanes, they block it, and that becomes a massive problem for city.
So you're not having vendors between Allen and Otis?
Correct. So we would propose to pull it back from Allen to Otis, but we would extend it from the Rockland Trust back to Dribbles and the hardware store, which would actually give us more space and service and footage, so we could take that second row of tents, spread a few of them out, and then depending on, and this is again, a pending scenario because we haven't measured out the final tent plan, we would either put up tents, small tents, on Otis where the stage used to be, which used to be the way we did it three years ago and more. ago and more, which allowed plenty of space on that road because it is wider, or eliminate that altogether and put in tents more back here because we have the ability, since there's no parking back here. That would open up the safety plan on Front Street, and this is something that, again, hopefully you saw from my email with the chief discussions, that he is 100% behind that idea.
Is there, you're still, I didn't see anything else. Are you still planning Carnival as well, or is that eliminated?
Carnival really stays where it is. Right now, the Carnival is essentially over in this region. It may move 50 feet to the west to get away from the secondary stage, but basically, we've mapped that out and that should still work just fine. The, any other questions on that?
No.
Just the parking, Nico, I'm just trying to figure, because I did see, that's a great plan, but I think parking's an issue because you're not going to be able to use the T with the commuter rail running, so I don't know how that's going to operate.
I still think we'll be able to use the T. We use the T when the duathlon's happening, when it's working. We don't use the primary lot, we use the larger secondary lot, the dump size lot.
Sold, it's gone, right?
The full lot is gone?
No.
I don't think it's passed papers, though. I don't think it's...
Just want to check on that.
Right, yeah, by then it will be.
Two things you want to look at. The lot that's next to the Celtic Paz is under agreement between the MBTA and their prospective buyer, who's looking to develop it. So, right now, they're not putting shovels on the ground come August, to my knowledge, because I don't think they've passed papers. So that's one option. The second is the MBTA upper lot that's beyond that one, you'd have to confirm availability.
Well, and even if this year it wasn't an issue, I'd still like to know what the time would be in future years, so certainly something I want to look into. We're not making a new plan for one year. We're making a new plan for 10 years. That's the goal.
I think the parking can be a bigger problem than you think. I think many, many more cars park in Cole Parkway than you'd think, and people are sometimes reluctant to take the trolleys and stuff.
Well, that's another thing I'd like to speak to. First of all, I completely agree parking's going to be a problem. Has it ever not been a problem at Heritage Days?
Always been a problem.
It's always a problem. It will always be a problem at any event in Citrus, and I will still stand behind the fact that if we never have an event of this magnitude or size in Citrus, then we're not really running a good town for the residents and for the visitors and the tourists, so why are we a seaside coastal tourist town? So, I'm not saying it's easy, I'm saying it's been doable, it always evolves, and we're evolving it again, and I'm certainly going to work with you guys and with the chiefs to make sure that there is a new plan. I'm not trying to poo-poo the idea that it's just a piece of cake and we got it. It's not a final parking plan, but it's a plan that's in motion that I think we can manage.
Sean?
Did you say you were going to leave Front Street open to traffic as Wallace is going on?
Not car traffic, not public traffic.
Okay, alright.
Front Street, southbound lane, would be open to two things. It would be open to police and EMS, safety.
For emergency, right?
For emergencies, really only for emergency purposes. It wouldn't be the plan to have fire trucks running down there, obviously, but it would be allowed and secureable. The second thing it would be open to, and again, this is something the chief was actually in favor of, was it would be open to a trolley concept. Right now, we have buses back to the parking and transportation scenario. Right now, we take school buses, just like we do for most of the events, from the MBTA lot to Front Street and back, and that's all it goes. Heritage Days doesn't have a whole lot of heritage in it the last few years, and I don't mean out of disrespect to anybody who's tried, but there's very little history involved in crafters on Front Street. What we plan to do is actually have a trolley instead of a bus. That trolley would be sort of a San Francisco-style trolley, meaning you can climb on, climb off, you can take it, it's classier, it's nicer, it doesn't make you feel like your knees are going to ram into the seat in front of you. And that trolley would come from the MBTA lot, there'd be three loops. The first would come from the MBTA lot, or whatever part you plan to come up with, come to Front Street and back for speed of use for our visitors. The second loop would actually run from First Cliff of Marinas, the Maritime Center, across to Front Street, through Front Street, through this lane of traffic, and then all the way down to either Jericho Ramp or the Lighthouse, depending on what the Harbor Master and we decide makes the most sense for boating people, which speaks to the other boating issue that we have with parking. The third and most important loop to us will be historical tour, meaning that we have thousands of people right here, but if they came in from the parking lot and the only loop we have is going back to the parking lot, the only historical site they can hit is the Mossing Museum, and that's if we make a stop there. But we propose a tour that would go from the lot to the Mossing Museum, come over to Second Cliff and hit the Maritime Center and the Stellwagen Bank, come back to Front Street and pick up people at every block through the concourse, which would be secured, meaning every time it comes through, there'll be a gate with an officer, the officer radios in, says, "Gate's open, trolley coming through." Every officer would have the trolley stop at walking speed through Front Street, and it would drop people off and pick people up. When it leaves, it would hit Pier 44 if we wanted it to, it would hit the Town Pier, sorry, before that, it would hit the Lighthouse, it would come back, and it would go out to hit Lawson Tower, Cudworth House, the Man House, the School House, I'm missing a couple there on the PowerPoint presentation, the Firehouse on its way back to the main lot. What that allows us to do, if you look at your master schedule demo that I put in front of you, is in orange, under Historical, you'll see a number of different slots for presentations. We want to bring history back to Citrus Heritage Days, meaning that the Historical Society is going to be working with us, Michael Coyne, who runs the Lucky Tin Cafe downtown and is a local artist, is going to be liaising with them and working with them to provide volunteers that are going to put on 30-minute or 60-minute presentations at each one of those nine to 11 different locations in town during that weekend that's accessible on our trolley tour, which you cannot do right now on school buses. That not only spreads the crowd through our great history in town, but it actually allows people safer passage in and out of a venue in multiple different directions at the same time, which means it's faster, it's easier, and people that are boating can get where they need to be, and people that are going back to their cars to go back to Boston can get there. So, hopefully that sort of answers some of the plans that we have to alleviate, not fix, not eliminate, but alleviate some of that traffic question and congestion that we always have, parking and traffic. There are four major items that we're asking you guys to consider that I think would basically be separate votes in terms of the board selection. The first is the second stage that I mentioned, and I can go into detail if you want, but it may not be right tonight to do it in terms of why the second stage is valuable, to direct flow, to partner with our businesses, and to alleviate pressure on the logistics of that pre-week coming up through the event. The second is the main tent. I think I've explained that one, if you have any questions, I'm happy to explain that further. But that allows us to have gated, private events, it allows us to work with restaurants, which I'm going to have Brian speak to in one second, and the third vote would be to allow a one-day, only Saturday alcohol license for that tent, which would be a secured, gated, wristband, ID-checked location, run by the chamber through the event, but run under the pretenses of the restaurants that already have staff trained to check IDs and be safe, et cetera. It would be beer, wine, champagne only, and it would allow us to serve sponsors' beverages or local restaurant beverages, which both gives us ability to partner with our restaurants and our businesses better as a chamber, and it allows us to go after bigger fish and sponsorships, which is going to help us pay for things like the second stage and the trolley. The fourth and final thing that we're going to be asking for, which is in your packets, is a timing change. Right now, we end our crafters at, I believe, 5 o'clock, we end our music at 8 o'clock, and I think, as you guys would agree, it hasn't been on time ever, and if it's been close, it certainly isn't close most years. Like I said before, I can have Brian and Al to speak to the professionalism that we're going to bring. We have the second stage that's going to come with a full labor crew, it's going to come with a setup crew. They're going to run the electricals and the systems all the way through, they're also going to run the timing, they're going to have people on and off those stages on time, and we're simply going to pull the plug. Another big change this year is that all the contracts the musicians sign are going to be signed by me. And again, no offense to Jerry, but Jerry has put a lot of effort and heart and soul into this event over the last 30 years, and the chamber needs to make sure that we control the logistics of this event better, and we're going to do that. So those are the four major timing things, votes. The timing that we'd like to ask for is that on Saturday night, we allow the main stage, which would most likely be the newer second stage that we showed you, would be open for a final show probably about 10:00, 10:30 at night. Along with that, when you have a main tent, a secured area with gates, a second stage that has a pretty expensive electrical kit, we're going to have overnight security there the whole time regardless. And what that'll allow us to do, only in Cole Parkway, would be hopefully to allow overnight tents, meaning on Front Street, we always clean up everything, Sunday morning, everybody has to come back and re-set up, which means we lose some of the vendors, we lose some of the crowd, we lose some of the business potential. We don't propose to change anything on Front Street because we need Front Street open for Saturday night businesses, but on Cole Parkway, if we have the carnival set up, a tent set up, a stage set up, and essentially that is a secured location, there's really no purpose or value to trying to open that section up to the few cars that might be able to find something there. We might be able to open up some parking back there in the front section towards the shops, but the back half of the parking lot would essentially stay open so that during the last show, people can still be shopping. During dinnertime, people can be going from our main tent to our restaurants, to our bars, back to the show, and they're enjoying the harbor the whole time. By leaving the stage, the, I'm sorry, tents, the crafters' tents in that section done and set up overnight, we would be able to charge a premium for those tents, there would be a different stage of level of sponsorship for those tents. Crafters would have a secure location, meaning they know that their jewels or paintings or whatever they might be are safe to vandalize them overnight, because we're going to have on-staffed security, not police security, chamber security. And ultimately, it means that Sunday morning is a lot easier to set up and everything goes like clockwork when we start our event schedule that's going to start earlier in the day. So those are the four main things that we're essentially asking for, on top of explaining all the different things. What I'd like to do before I shut up finally is to actually let these guys speak for one second. Brian owns three restaurants, he's been in the restaurant business more than half his life, and I'd like him to talk just for a minute about what we're going to do with concierge service and bringing our restaurants together as a team for a special. How are you guys?
Brian, good evening.
Good evening. Well, our goal for Heritage Days this year is to kind of bring it back and make it a little bit more about local restaurants, sustainable agriculture, the stuff that we have in Citrus at our fingertips, and really develop what we have going on right now, which is like a great restaurant scene in the South Shore, and kind of give us an area of Heritage Days to show off what we've got, so. It'll be a matter of little cooking demonstrations between local restaurants, as well as receptions for the musicians, as well as VIPs, and maybe a couple of selectmen if you play your cards right. And, you know, a couple of different ways to showcase what we actually have, and instead of just having to deal with the burgers and the hot dogs and that kind of stuff that's readily available at the event, which still will be there, obviously, for the kids and stuff, a place for us to showcase, you know, really good lobster rolls and, you know, clam chowders and local seafood and what people really want to eat in Citrus. We want people to get a feel of us being a kind of a trendy, kind of a new age, kind of a downtown hip restaurant area, as opposed to a place where you come once a year to get a hot dog or a hamburger. We want them to get a taste for it so they come back to us at Christmas time, they come back to us in January and February when we really need the business. I think we've got some great restaurants downtown, as well as in Citrus in general, that will really be on board to do something like this, and sort of make a name for ourselves in that one weekend of the year where we get more tourists than any other time of the We would also like to do, you know, sort of be tastings for certain areas. When we figure out our schedule, we'll let you guys know, but certain times where we're going to have it open to the public, other times it's going to be ticketed with security, especially if we are doing alcohol, that's going to be very important. We will bring our restaurant individuals onboard that are all TIP certified. We will get backup from the larger liquor companies like the Elm knife, Sandberg's, who will supply the alcohol, and they will also have people on hand to help us out with that kind of stuff. So, it'd be, what we're really hoping for is a one-day liquor license, so we can use that tented area in order to show off what we have. When we figure out our schedule and we have it done 100%, we can fill in with other things in the tent that we've sort of brought off-site, like the oyster shucking competition, have all that in a central area so that people wouldn't, people will be there for most of the day, and that'll break up with the music and stuff in between, you know?
The thing I want to add to what Brian's saying is, we're talking about concierge service. Right now, if you want food, you go to the food court, you grab a sausage, you have a hot dog, and that $5.50 goes to Worcester or goes to the North Shore or goes somewhere else. By bringing home restaurants onboard and collaborating as a team, we're actually keeping that money in Citrus in a number of ways, but one of the things we're going to do to really class up the event like we keep talking about is what we're calling concierge service. Imagine walking from one stage to the next between shows and having somebody in an apron by a main tent saying, "I can give you a reservation tonight for 6:30 at Reva, or I have one at 7 o'clock at the Galley, or I have one at 8 o'clock at the Millworf." And right there, we're going to have all our restaurants partnering to provide tables so that our public can get what they want right there in the parking lot. It's again, something that we've never been able to do before.
Yeah, it'll showcase a real sort of a team, team building and exercise between us and the other restaurants downtown, and I think it's a great way to sort of warm it up for the public. A lot of times when people come down to us in Heritage Days, we're actually too busy to be able to present our food properly.
Brian? Brian, just your vision of the actual beer and wine license, I think it's a great idea, but where you have multiple licenses in the same tent, how's that going to work?
We don't envision multiple licenses.
No, but in other words, if you're there and Reva's there and Jamie?
We'll have somebody, we'll have somebody heading it up.
Right.
The chamber will be the licensee.
Okay.
And we will be staffing it. So imagine that as a sponsored restaurant, you're going to sponsor it like a normal way with cost, but you're also going to provide to the chamber X number of appetizers for this event.
Gotcha.
X number of staff for the security, X number of servers, et cetera, and X number of tables at your restaurant for those two nights, something to that effect.
It'll be then sort of like a restaurant committee where we have...
That is, I just wanted to clarify, because I was thinking, you know...
The licensee will be the chamber.
Sean?
What did the chief think of this idea, Brian, having the alcohol? Have you run this by him?
Sorry?
What did the chief about this?
The chief didn't see, I did run it by him, I talked to him about the alcohol license. He didn't seem to have a problem with it as long as it was secure, meaning as long as we had the tent not just open air wandered to walk out.
That it could walk down Front Street with it, right?
But it would be a gated area. So you'd actually, you'd actually in that, sorry, in that area by the, by where the tent and the secondary stage are, you would have an actual gated area with fencing, and there would be one entry in, one entry out, and so you'd have to get carded, in the way I described it with the chief that we discussed, we'd like to probably have wristbands, but that's not good enough because you can leave, give it to your cousin, and he can go in. But every single time you come in with a wristband, you still have to get carded. So every person, every time they're in that tent area for that section of time when there is alcohol in premises, would have to be carded every single time they come in.
Okay. And this idea of the restaurants showcasing their products, open to all the restaurants in town, whoever might want to participate?
Everybody, yes.
Good.
That's our goal, everyone wants to get involved, the more the merrier.
Great.
We've done a bunch of these events with, you know, Taste of the South Shore, and we've been doing one in all for the last couple of years, so we're, I'm really used to working with a lot of different restaurants at the same time. Fodderbills is a big one we do in Quincy every year, we have about 3,000 people come through it. I usually bring all three of my restaurants to that.
What would the public expect to be able to get, Brian? I've never seen a, you know, never gone to an event like this, like a clam chowder or something?
Exactly. We did a taste, let's say we did a taste of Citrus Harbor at a specific time, 12 to 2, you'd come in and purchase a ticket, and you'd be, each restaurant would showcase one or two of their signature items.
Okay.
In bite-sized forms.
Right.
So it would be, you know, you might come in, you might, from Robin, you might get a taco, or, you know, I would give you a little, you know, empanada or something like that. Millworf, roll a clam chowder, something like that, you know?
Okay.
A little taste of what you have to offer. It would be up to me, heading up the food part of it, to make sure that all those dishes are varied enough that not everybody's getting clam chowder, not everybody's getting beef stew. I'd make sure that they submit their menu items to me, and I'd go through and make sure there's enough variety in there for everybody to be happy.
Yeah, the only thing, everything sounds great, you know, such a great improvement, but for me, I just, could you provide us at some point, very simple kind of schematic as to where... as to where Stage One, Stage Two, the main stage, and all that? So you don't have to give it to me now, but because I know we have other things to do, but we can at least see that to have an idea of the flow of traffic.
But this is the second stage right here, and that would be where the tent goes. And then that's where Jerry's stage is. So that gets pulled off of the main street there. You can see that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Who is the second stage?
So the tent is in the middle?
Yeah, tent is in the middle.
One of the other concerns that the chief and I chatted about was fire safety. And again, this is certainly something Chief Murphy and I will need to discuss, finalize this question. But they already have discussed the idea that unlike the new stage we're discussing, which is a safe stage, Jerry's stage, again, no disrespect to the fact that what we got right now, is made of plywood and timber and all sorts of things that are flammable and are not a good idea, you know, congested area next to three buildings made of wood. So one of the reasons for moving the stage beyond safety, that we had one minor issue last year during the event, as well as just congestion in general with police plans, is to get that away from those locations and put it in a safer location for fire safety. And that's what we discussed. We're going to finalize the location of where in that row the stage would actually go, really based on how far from a security standpoint of fire safety that needs to be. We have plenty of power options. It's never really been an issue of providing power. It's been an issue of green room concepts, which these guys are going to handle, and the idea of being closer to a music shop, which makes perfect sense for Jerry, it doesn't make sense for the safety of the town.
Buddy, did you really open up this? Tony?
Yeah, it's good. Is the rest of the chamber behind this?
Absolutely. Yeah, the chamber has already approved this 100% to this plan in its format to this point. Obviously, like we've discussed, the traffic and parking plan still needs to sort of be tweaked and finalized. The budget really is a big issue, but one of the reasons we needed to come tonight and start to get past a few of these things is that we need to start getting sponsors, and we need to start getting our application out by March 1st to the vendors that have come back from last year. So the idea of having a tiered schedule for crafters' tents and being more expensive for overnight service would essentially needs to be decided very soon so that I can get an application out at a higher price on it because right now it doesn't...
Are there going to be as many booths?
The way we figure it, and again, the one question is Otis Place, but the way we figure it, we have 35 tents in a row, there's two rows. If I eliminate one of 35, I should be able to add five to eight on Front Street, even though we're moving it down, we have more space there. And by adding another five to eight there, if I do something with Otis Place, that gives me another 10 to 12, and that only leaves me with about 10:15 to replace on Cold Park Way. We should be able to do that no problem because right now, there are no tents in the back half of the parking lot. I can fit two rows of about eight to nine tents in there, so I can replace all those tents on Front Street back in Cold Park Way with really no change. And when I tier the pricing for hopefully an overnight scenario, I can actually expand our revenue potential for things like the safety plan, the trolleys, and the stages to cover the lower budget.
Okay, I was going to say, so, I'll let you go.
Yeah, so just a few things that stick out to me. First of all, I love it. I think it's great. I really think it would boost it up. I think Brian did a great job with the food. I like the change of it. I like more music. I think with two stages, you get more content and more people to drop people there.
A lot more diversity is something I haven't talked about, too.
I see a lot more expenses, you know, overnight security, fencing, big tent, all this sort of stuff. So I just want to make sure that it stays a free event for the citizens. And I know you haven't mentioned anything like that, but I think a lot of people go there because it's a, you know, it's a free, open event.
Absolutely. We don't have any plans to make this a ticket-only event.
Right, and the ticket stuff is optional, so...
The ticket stuff is going to be...
Just a tent?
It's really the tent event.
But also, we don't want to price out, like you can't take your craft booths and say it was, I'm making up numbers, $20 last year, and now it's $300. So it dilutes that part of it.
No, the price for a vendor to come and be a crafter at our event right now, and I don't...
I don't even care.
I think it's in the range of $250 for a weekend booth, okay? There's still going to be a $250 option on Front Street, on Cold Park Way, right behind CVS. But by the main tent, with prime location near the microphone and overnight, where you don't have to clean up and set up again, that might be $350.
You take care of that, I'm just saying...
And between those tent pricing and the ticketed items that we're going to be able to provide in our tent, our main tent, we do figure we could probably raise somewhere in the $10,000 to $18,000 more in that Saturday, Sunday, which will cover the $10,000 stage, about $4,000 more for trolleys and a few other items.
All right, so I need to, I forgot more. It's 8 o'clock, and we still have a really aggressive agenda, so I just, I want to kind of bring this back to, you want four things from us tonight, or you, because we're not making any motion on anything, but you want some kind of like direction of how you do the four?
What I'd love tonight is, number one, to have some idea that the, well, I'd love to have a vote on one thing only, which would be having tents overnight pending a final police plan, pending final security plan.
Okay, so tent is one thing.
Because that allows me to get an application.
Hold on, Nico, okay. So you're looking for a tent, you're looking to be able to sell or be able to offer beer, wine, and champagne in the tent, so an alcohol license one day, which would be Saturday.
Saturday, correct.
And then the second thing is the second stage, and then the fourth thing was the timing on Saturday. I thought I heard you say the last show would go on until, would start at 10 or 10:30?
End at 10:30.
Ends at 10:30, I thought that's...
End at...
Okay, I thought you were saying start, it's going to be, I don't think that's going to go.
End at 10:30 and overnight booths.
Okay, so, all right, so I'm not sure, I can understand why you want to be able to get a sense because the last thing you want to be is going down to that road and finding out that you don't have the approval.
When it comes to the, when it comes to the second stage, we're still looking at safety plans, security plans, costs. We don't need approval for that right now.
The only thing that concerns me, at least out of the four, is the tent and being able to ensure that alcohol doesn't get out to the public. That's a major concern anyways with restaurants. You folks know that, that's, you know, because that's, that could be a bad thing that could happen. Aside from that, how does the board feel about these things?
Does the ABCC, would they have an issue with your kind of party tent there?
They would be involved in the one-day liquor license.
So as long as it doesn't...
Yeah, it would have to be agreed on by them.
I think it's, I don't have a problem with any of them. Just the transportation, parking are the two things.
Yeah, that's the two big things for me, too.
I believe that's certainly something that's top on my list of things to figure out.
If you want people to use the trolleys, I think they have to be more frequent than I think your plan is.
Yeah, I think, I think the thing with parking is that if you're going to, first is enforcement, which you should talk to the chiefs about, our chief, Stuart, about, because I think if people understand they're going to get a hefty ticket, then they're going to go park at a lot that's designated, and they'll take the trolleys if the trolleys are there. And that would be a huge, you know, solution, if you will, to the parking problem. The boaters are going to be upset, however, the boaters, some boaters are going to be on their boats listening to the concert right there because they're docked there. So obviously, trying to work something with the harbor master to kind of work the loop, I think that's a great, brilliant idea. But I think in looping it with a historical component is actually a really good touch to the event, to loop that in for heritage purposes, so. All right. I don't, do we have a motion line? I don't, we had a motion.
It's my understanding, the next possibility, the application would come in from the committee to the tent. Be approved by all town departments, then you would vote on it.
All right, so I think, I think...
In addition to that, we would include the one-day liquor license.
The consensus of the board is, it sounds...
Sounds good.
Is that fair?
Absolutely.
That's fair.
The only thing I'm going to really move forward on before I have the final application voted on is essentially, applications for crafters are going to go out on March 1st. And that will then include, if there's a consensus, it's going to include overnight options for Cold Park Way. I wanted to be clear so that we're on the same page pending that vote, so that we're not confused later when I come back to that.
Do we need to hear from any of the businesses down there?
We've been trying to do that for years, Nico, when I was the chair, and, you know, I mean, I think it's a great idea to be able to have those places up.
I think the other thing is it creates better qualities. There's some crafters who say, "Look, I don't want to take down and then..."
I think it's a quality product.
...
We do, we lose about 20% of our crafters on Sunday that don't return.
That's right.
Yeah.
They get their big dividends. So I think, I think you just got to make sure, talk to Chief Murphy, Chief Stewart there. I think it's a great plan.
Three blizzards from now, I promise the doctor.
You got to come up with some kind of food for the blizzards.
The blizzard.
Snow cones.
Dairy queen, the blizzard. I don't want to take up any more of your time.
All right, so I think you got the consensus of how we are about it. And we're not looking to say no.
I really appreciate the time.
I mean, I think you guys are, you're putting your reputations up there, and that's what we want. You're going to do the, do a great thing, and it's going to be fun and fantastic.
I'll speak next time, but loads of, you know, positive stuff.
Steve drove back through the stuff from New Hampshire to make sure...
Did you?
Oh, sorry.
Steve, thank you for doing it.
Oh, no, thank you.
I know.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for the time. As soon as I have the chief's online, I will come back.
I will say, there's a guy at Malaney's who serves a really good tuna tartare. He thinks he could do it in New Hampshire.
We'll get him working.
Brian, good to see you.
He's not getting along.
General, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
See you.
Okay, it is a little after 8:00. I guess we should probably hit the next agenda unless, does anybody want to take a quick five-minute break?
Yeah, I would.
You know, we're going to take a five-minute break, folks. We've been here since 6:00 o'clock. It's been two hours, so five minutes and we're going to get started right on the next...
Hi.
Welcome. Sorry for the wait, I appreciate it. So we finally have the report.
We do, we do. Very pleased. So I'm happy to be here, and I'm even happier to be able to introduce Jan Wuchler, which for those of you who have not met her yet, she's the director for the Center for Demographic Research with the Gerontology Institute at UMass Boston. So she assisted and executed the study, the project for us, and this is her presentation to us of the results of the recommendations that she has. So I'm happy to have her, glad to give her the floor, and...
And here she is.
And here she is, yes.
Good evening. Jan, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I'm happy to be here and share some thoughts about the report with you. I know you have the full report, and I believe we've distributed handouts related to the PowerPoints. And so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time going through this. I know if you have questions, you can ask me, and if you want to, you know, reflect on the report and get back to me, that's fine as well. I am going to, tonight, just focus primarily on the pieces of the report that I think are most important with respect to some of the key recommendations that we're making. And again, I do invite you to read the report and ask questions later, if you like. Okay, that's, okay. Yeah, okay. So the scope of this study was meant to investigate the current and the future needs and preferences of Situate's older residents. The primary focus is on the Council on Aging itself, what it does, what it could be doing differently, how satisfied people are with the Council on Aging activities. A secondary focus was on town amenities and features, other town offices, how they're working together around aging issues, because as you know, and when you talk to the fire department, the police department, the housing department, you know that seniors really impact all of those offices. And so that was a secondary focus. But again, the primary focus was on the Council on Aging. And before we go on, I want to say one word about terminology. A big stumbling block that we always have to deal with is the use of the term seniors. Nobody likes the use of the term seniors, and nobody wants to be a senior. I use that term, and it's in the report, and it's in this presentation to some extent, simply to flag the population age 60 and older. This is conventional language, that's all it's meant to be, to provide some precision around that issue. And that is the phrasing used in the federal government for programs, eligibility for programs around focusing on older adults. So that's the language piece, okay. The methods that we used in this report included demographic methods, just presenting some demographic data based on information from the U.S. Census Bureau. We used projections from the Donahue Institute, which is an institute within the UMass president's office. We conducted a resident survey with 2,000 residents age 45 and over asked to respond. This was a mail-back survey with a web response option. Those who replied did so primarily by mailing back their response. We had a response rate of 32%, which was quite good. The response rate was considerably higher for people who were older, people who were 60 and over, than for those who were 45 to 59. However, we had a good response all across the board. So we had a total number of 632 people responding. We also had focus groups with representatives from organizations that work with older adults in the community. We had key informant interviews with town administrator, a representative from the Board of Selectmen, Mario O'Toole, the fire chief, and the police chief. And we also did some limited comparisons of councils on aging for five different communities. Okay, talking just briefly about some of the key demographic findings, and these frankly, I'm a demographer by training, and the demographic features are some of the most compelling features, I think, for any community, as for this community. This shows what the age structure looks like, starting from 2,000. You can see a growth of the age 60-plus population between 2,000 and 2010, from 20% to 24% of the population. And using these projections from the Donahue Institute, you can see that by 2013, so just 15 years from now, you're expected to have about a third of the town being age 60 and over. Now, this is the age demographic, as I said, that is the Council on Aging age demographic. They're responsible for providing services, for connecting people to services that they're eligible, for providing activities that are helpful, meaningful, valued by older residents that are going to help secure their well-being and their health. So that's a very important slide all by itself. Okay, this one. This just looks at some of this, a little bit longer timeframe, a little bit more detail, and really highlights the convergence of the older population and the younger population. The lower line is the age 60-plus population. By 2030, it's expected to be nearly 6,000 people, up from about 4,300 counted in the 2010 census. The population under age 60 is going to be just about 12,000 people. So then, again, you're looking at about a third of the population, but this puts a numerical face on it. So the actual total number of the population in Situate is expected to be fairly flat into 2030. Obviously, projections can change, these things can change. If you build a whole bunch of housing, if you do various kinds of things that could result in a growth in the population, but of course, how that impacts the age structure of the population will depend on what kind of housing you build. And so, given past trends, it is expected, again, that you're going to have about 6,000 seniors, and they're going to represent about a third of the population. One last demographic piece that I think is important to note is that even now, even before you're at that approaching convergence of the population, 40% of your homeowners are age 60 and over. So clearly, this is a very important demographic for the, for the community. Okay, all right. Now, I say recommendations, and that's sort of rushing into it, but again, what I'm trying to do, given the limited time here, is really just highlight the recommendations that we can, we feel most confident about, given the data. And so I'm going to be presenting the data as we walk through some of these recommendations. Before I do that, though, I want to put one more thing into context, and that is that Situate seniors are highly committed to aging in place. They really love Situate, they love living here, they've lived here a really long time, and they want to stay. More than half of the Situate seniors have lived here for 45 years or more, okay? Maybe you're related to some of that. They're your neighbors. They've lived here for a really long time. They're highly committed to the community. More than ten, nine out of ten feel a strong sense of belonging to the community. They feel safe here. They want to stay. Three-quarters of them regard staying as situat, in situat, as very important. So, we just asked, how important is it to you to stay here as you grow older? And three-quarters of them say it's very important. And almost all the rest said it's somewhat important. So, again, they've been here a long time. They feel comfortable here. They feel part of the community. They belong here. They want to stay here. Okay. All right. So, here's getting into some of the, the recommendations. One thing that you can do, starting at the sort of larger macro-community level, is to promote livability. This, these are, these are things that are very important to facilitating seniors aging in place, staying in community, and, and doing well. But they're also very important to the community in general. So, these are, I think, kind of no-brainers, okay, in terms of promoting the well-being of seniors. When you offer support for maintaining and adapting homes, for instance, offer some kind of support, whether it's through referral to high-quality, affordable organizations that will help seniors adapt their homes so that they can stay in place, make it where they can live on a single floor, make it where they, if they need bars or, you know, grab bars or ramps or something like that, that they know what are the services they can trust, connect them to programs that might help offset some of those costs. That can be highly effective in terms of letting seniors stay in place. And it can help seniors stabilize the neighborhoods that seniors live in. And, and that can be very valuable as well. We found that twenty to twenty-five percent of seniors in the survey said that their homes did in fact need modification in order for them to age in place. And of those who needed modification, more than half of them said they couldn't afford it. So, now they may be, that may be a misperception on some part, okay? So, having, having services at the Council on Aging where they know, I can call them, they can connect me with services that I need, they can help me figure out how much I should be paying for that, all of that can be very, very helpful. Expanding opportunities to downsize in the community can be very helpful. We heard a lot of people saying, "I'm living in situat. I want to stay. I live in a really big house. I can't maintain it. I don't necessarily even want to stay in this house, but I want to stay in situat. But there's no place else to go." Okay? They need single-floor living. They need condos, maybe assisted living, maybe some kind of continuing care, living setting, something that would let them stay here where they've spent so much of their lives, where they're highly committed, they're networked into the community. Giving them some opportunities to downsize for those who want to do so can be very helpful. Another thing you can do is expand public transportation options. See, again, I told you it was a no-brainer. All right? But we heard a lot about, you know, older people, in order to stay in place, they need to be able to get around. There aren't a lot of options here. The Council on Aging transportation is a very, very important option for many older residents. But public transportation beyond that, it's very limited. We actually heard a lot, you can see from this, we heard a lot from the people forty-five to fifty-nine. So, I suspect if we went all the way down to people in their thirties and twenties, we would hear about that as well. So, that's clearly an issue for situat, but it is something that is very relevant to seniors. And we heard things like, Pete, that's okay. We heard things like people saying, older people saying, "Public transportation is inconvenient. It's not available where I want to go. If, when I can't drive, I don't think I'll be able to live here anymore." Okay. So, we heard those kinds of things. Another thing you can do is continue to promote cooperation across town offices. Again, we talked to the fire chief. We talked to the police chief. We talked to the people who know how all of the town offices that really deal with, with seniors. And we heard that they're all being impacted by the aging population. It's not necessarily that their workload is increasing, but it's changing. So, for instance, we heard from the fire chief that the fire calls are going down, but the medical calls are going up. And so, they're having to really rethink the work that they do. They're having to shift their emphasis. They're having to retrain around these issues. And they're having to work very closely with the Council on Aging in order to reach the older population and in order to make sure that they have the training that they need. So, continuing to promote the Council on Aging as a research or a resource for other town offices would be very important. And continuing support for the social services coordinator within the Council on Aging. We heard a whole lot about her. We heard how important she was to other town offices and what a big impact she was making. I will say that this is the first time I've run into a community that had such a position. It's a, I think, a very innovative thing to have created that position, and it seems to be working very well. So, I think you guys should be congratulated for putting that in place. And again, it's, it's a really great model moving forward. Okay. Now, you need to prepare for substantially increased demand for Council on Aging programs and services. This, you know, normally with recommendations, I want, I try to say things like, "You might see this," or "You maybe should be prepared for this," but this is, this is going to happen. You are going to see increased demand for programs and services. The existing services offered through the Council on Aging are highly valued. They are well-regarded. There's a lot of support in the survey data for these programs. For instance, eighty percent of seniors' rate transportation offered through the senior center is very important to them and to the community. So, these are well-regarded programs. They're valuable programs. And what you're going to see is that those are, there's increasing demand for those programs. We asked people who did not participate in the senior center currently, or in the Council on Aging programs currently, how likely is it that you will in the future? And more than sixty percent of the forty-five to fifty-nine-year-olds, as well as the sixty and older, said, "It's very likely, or somewhat likely, that I'm going to do this in the future." So, they are aware that those programs exist. They're waiting for an opportunity where they're looking for activities that, that are offered there, or that they need the services that are offered there. And, and they're expecting that it's likely that they will in fact take advantage of those programs. So, when you put together the demographic projections that suggest you're gonna have an increasing number of older adults in situat, the fact that the programs are regarded very well already, and a large number of people who don't participate say they're going to in the future, you're going to have increasing demand for the programs. Okay. There are some programs that you don't currently have, that you might consider. One is a social adult daycare program in situat. We asked if people would support having such a program in situat. We did tell the, the, on the questionnaire, we wrote what it was, because a lot of people don't know what it is. But these kinds of programs are usually fee-based. They provide daytime supervision and care for adults with disability. Many times, these are older adults with dementia. They're very important in terms of getting those people out of the house, having them engage with people in the community, and they're very important as a source of respite for family caregivers. These programs are very helpful to the families that use them. And a large share of the survey respondents did in fact favor offering a program like this in situat. So, this is something that you can consider. Not every community has it, but many of them find that they're very helpful. This finding also converges with another finding that we, we, I don't have a slide on here, but it's in your, in the, in the report, highlighting that there are a lot of family caregivers in situat. And when we asked, "Are you a caregiver of an older or disabled adult?" Yes or no? And if they, they were, we asked, "How hard is this? How, how difficult is this?" And a large share of them said it was very difficult. So, again, something like respite, something that would allow family caregivers to have that opportunity for some respite would be very valuable. All right. Now, turning to the space issue. I know that one of the reasons you asked us to do this report to begin with is that you're considering some of your options with respect to the physical space that you have available for Council on Aging activities. There are lots of different ways to approach this. One way is to compare what kind of space you have relative to some other communities. And so, we did compare your space to five other communities shown on this slide. The best way to assess that, or there are a number of ways, but one of the ways that you can assess the adequacy of the space is as a ratio for the population. So, if you take the ratio of your square feet of your current senior center, which is 1,000 square feet, to the number of residents age sixty and over, which is about forty-three hundred, you have about point-two square feet of dedicated, stable, permanent space per senior resident. That's clearly much less than any of these comparison communities. The comparison communities are not that different in size, but they have very different square footage available. So, again, there is no set standard for this. There are different numbers that have been used. The Elder Affairs used to talk about about five and a half square feet per person. I know you all, your eyes grew up. That's a very big space. Most communities do not get there. Newbury Port is just finishing there. It's gonna be opening later in 2015. And they've got 16,000 square feet, which is 3.8. So, that's below the 5.5. And I'll also point out Marshfield, that's a community that you know well, they have 2.4 square feet. They are one of the only senior centers I've ever talked to who say they feel like their space is adequate. So, I think that there is certainly room for a lot of variability in terms of how much you actually choose to commit to that effort. But I think the, certainly the comparison communities have more space than you do. If you were gonna follow the Marshfield benchmark, you would be looking at about 10,000 square feet. Okay. We found a lot of evidence that having more dedicated space would be supported in situat. And that is not just for the seniors that we talked to, but for people in the focus groups, people in the, that we talked to through interviews as well. We found that residents and others recognize that the Council on Aging staff is doing a good job, given the limits of their physical space, but there's a lot of dissatisfaction with the physical space. So, we really frankly just heard a lot of agreement that the current space is inadequate. Not, we didn't ask, you know, what you think would be better, where should it be? We didn't go down that path. That all is, is you guys' business and you guys' effort. But, but we just heard that there was, there was a desire for something different, something more. In terms of thinking about how to design the space that you might want to consider for your programs and expansion, you should, again, keep in mind the level of demand expected and build that into your thinking. Think about the program priorities for expansion. We asked people what were the most highly-valued programs. We found that lifelong learning was very valued. So, there were some kind of quiet activities, like lifelong learning, technology classes, support programs, things like that. But there were also things like strength training, aerobics exercise, yoga, you have tai chi, things that take more space, a different kind of space. So, you're gonna need a variety, you have different kinds of spaces. You're gonna need different spaces that can be used at the same time. You're gonna have to keep in mind that outreach and referral is a very important part of your mission currently, and those things require privacy. They're confidential conversations, people talking about they can't pay their fuel bills, they need help because their mother is being, you know, abused or something, financial abuse concerns about that. Those things require privacy and you need to have some private space. Right now, the senior center really doesn't have that. And you have to keep in mind that parking is a big, big issue in your current setting, but it's a big issue in any setting. You have to have good parking. You have to have enough parking for your seniors. All right. I believe that's it. I'm happy to have been here. I'm happy to take any questions if you have a couple things to say. And I hope you find the report useful.
Questions?
I'm sorry. Are there any towns where the social adult, the social adult daycare programs coexist in the COA building?
There are. I mean, Dexbury has it. In fact, Dexbury is one of the only ones in, in the near communities. And they have been running for over five years, six, seven at least. So, they welcome people from other areas when they can't, but they do, they, and when they expand, it will be to expand that program in fact, but they have been able to. And they took over space that would have maybe been utilized by other programs, but it was important to do that. So, they went from one day a week to two days a week, to one group, two days a week, to another group, two days a week. And so, you know, sort of inch their way into the space. But yes, but they do need more space to be able to run adequately because there's a great, great demand.
Okay. My only other second question was, what public transportation initiatives are we not taking advantage of that other towns are? Obviously, not a MBTA bus system. I know that's not here.
You say the T?
Yeah. But you know what? Are there any other state or federally-funded programs that we're not taking advantage of that we should be?
I don't know with respect to general public transportation.
Well, just the GATRA stuff.
Yeah. I mean, the GATRA.
We've gotta expand on that.
That's the possibility in our area.
That's, okay.
You know, it gets me to what Tricia had asked for last year, I think through Capital, which was a trolley primarily for businesses and the golf and everything. But I still think it's a great idea to consider at least two days a week if we were to finance that and have a trolley that would go to the Council on Aging or to Central Park or Lincoln Park or Wheeler Park, to be able to pick people up and drop them down. At least two days a week, they can go downtown, go to the villages, which would be a huge benefit for transportation to get people out.
We talked about that a few years ago. We're gonna pilot the harbor.
GATRA, right.
And, but I know Tricia's been talking about maybe getting it back in.
Yeah, we've already, we met with them as soon as the Green Bush Weekend Service came back. And they've already presented a pilot program to their board. And so, there should be something before you, hopefully, you know, six to eight weeks. I followed up with them, I think, two weeks ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It's, it's very important, not only for the citizens, but for, not the senior citizens, but for citizens in general, to have, people have a way to get around. I think it'd be useful.
I found it fascinating that the other thing is the retrofitting of homes. You know, obviously, seniors, anybody who lives here, you want to be able to stay and remain. And I think that's something that I hadn't thought of. And I think that's something to figure out how to pilot something going forward programmatically, maybe through grants, to try to think about retrofitting various homes.
List.
Right. That's a huge benefit for, for people in general.
Other questions from the board?
So, okay, now we've finished this. I think the next thing, I assume, Linda, we need to start thinking, kind of like from a programmatic standpoint, where we want to push forward.
Starting to implement a little bit at a time, some of these recommendations, and just look toward the future for implementing more.
But I'm thinking more towards like, okay, a new center altogether. And obviously, we need to start having that dialogue and discussion with everybody about what, what's the scope of the square footage, I think, really? Because that's what we're gonna be looking at to try to see what's gonna, you know, and I, that's driven by the programs, I presume. If, the programs dictate the square size that you're anticipating, not just now, but if the demographics, well, not if, the demographics are gonna go up, 6,000 people in fifteen years, you know, that's gonna be your, you know, for this, for the center itself.
We use the space we have. If we have limited space, then we use limited space. If we can have more programs happening at the same time, we can expand. We all have to.
Well, I, I just know, I think our board is, we know the space that we have is inadequate. So, now we, we're gonna have new space.
Right.
And the question is, okay, the next step is the new senior centers, really what I'm looking at. Can I speak on behalf of the board? That's what we're talking about.
Absolutely.
A new senior center. Kind of like, so I mean, I think from a program standpoint, that would be the first thing is to say, these are the programs that, one, we have, expanding it to two, these are the programs we want. I mean, there are a lot of good things here in this report that we can use and apply to go forward.
I don't think we can overlook the fact that there is a plan. You know, there is a master plan that kind of has the gates building being utilized for this, you know, and having more space, obviously more space than we have now. Is that feasible? Is the programming sufficient? I mean, there's flexibility in the space. You know, and is that the path that we continue to pursue? Or do we have to go down another path? You know, the good thing about that space is there's mixed-use space. You've got gyms there that can be used for, for multipurpose stuff. But there still is, off the top of my head, eight, nine, 10,000 square feet of dedicated space for that. So, if that's not the workable space, then we need to, you know, readjust our site.
So, we gave this draft report, I think the draft, right, to Derky Brown, who did the original structural assessment. So, they're sort of going through that now. I haven't approved the proposal because I wanted to have a further discussion with the board. But we've been waiting to see exactly what John just said, you know?
We need 10,000 square.
What are the programs we have?
It'd be like Marshfield.
What do we need to create or expand on? And how are the numbers gonna drive the possible number of participants in those programs? And, and that will drive the space.
Right.
Well, if you just take the senior population and pick Marshfield's 2.4, you're looking at 10,000 square feet.
So, our next, Murphy Brown, Tricia, when, we have a timetable and I'm just to...
He sent me...
It's not what everything, I know.
We sent in the draft. He's responded and we have not responded back to his...
All right. Are there questions? Questions from the audience?
Gordon Price for Eman LeRoe. Just more comment and question. I would just hope that the process going forward is as open and as involving everyone who needs to be involved in the process of both programming, but also physical needs, as was done with the school and the safety building. My sense at this point is that some of the senior issues have not been looked at close to enough. The COA has not been involved as much as it should have been. We've been asking about the Derky Brown proposal, no proposal, but issue, and we didn't even know that it's gone up for a proposal, that there was something coming back. Derky Brown has not talked to the COA about what the COA's plots are of a senior center. So, I think it's representative of the fact that this is kind of in a closed, very closed process that's going on here in Town Hall, and it used to be made open to everyone, COA...
Gordon, direct it to the board, please. All right, direct your comments to the board, please.
I just want the process to be open. I want the end result to be something that's gonna be good for the town and good for the seniors who live there in Situate. And I think it needs to rely upon a lot more expert opinion. There was several opinions that were rendered back in 2005 and '06 about what would an appropriate center for the town. I think it's improper for the physical plant to be kind of pigeonholed into gates, which seems like what people are thinking about right now. I think the Derky Brown proposal talked about coming up with an alternative proposal to the gates, and I certainly hope that that's gonna happen. If it doesn't, I'll be sadly disappointed. So, just, you know, let's have this an open discussion, involve everybody who needs to be involved and make the right decision for the town and the senior population in Situate.
Gordon, I gotta address this, because, you know, I met with you about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and I told you, you know, this is an open process, and I don't want anybody to walk out of here saying it's not, okay? And I want to make, I have to defend the board and the town, because it has been an open process. As I indicated two weeks ago when we sat down at your office, you know, we came in here a little over a year and a half on Halloween to address concerns, people were concerned that we were not addressing for the Council on Aging and Senior Center. We are, okay? And as I said to you two weeks ago, and I'm saying to the people here, this board wants a new Council on Aging. It's got 1,000 square feet in a school building that was built in 1832 or 1834 that was converted to a fire station that frankly opened in 1994 for a senior center. It's junk, we all agree about that. Now, the method for the town to decide whether they want to put it into gates is going to be a vote for the town to decide, and you folks are gonna vote on it. And if not, then we're gonna have another plan, or we'll have two plans, frankly. We've had that plan over 10 years ago, and it failed, unfortunately. I wasn't on the board at the time, but it failed, having a senior center. The town's gonna decide, has to decide something. People have to accept one or the other, or, because we're not gonna have both. But it's an open process. It has been with the schools, has been with the public safety, it is continuing and will be with the Council on Aging. And there's nothing improper, and I don't want, I have to defend this, because, you know, nothing's been improper, Gordon, about what we've done. Right now, we have a building, it's a school right now. We've asked them to just render some spatial issues. That's what came out a year and a half ago, and that's what created some issues with people saying, well, you're only gonna give us 8,000 square feet. This was just renditions to see what could potentially. With the programming feasibility study, we're asking them, let's take a harder look at that building. Now, if people don't want to have that, and they say, you know, we want to tear down the building, and we want to subdivide the lots, that's what people are gonna decide. Or they're gonna say, let's turn it into senior housing. Turn the whole school into senior housing. Or they're gonna say, no, we're gonna have the gymnasium with rec department and maybe Council on Aging, so be it. Or they're gonna say no. All I know is, I don't want to be in the position of not having a new Council on Aging center within the next five years, because people are all bent out of shape, because you disagree with me, and I disagree with you, and then after five years, we have nothing, except a 1,000-square-foot junk of a building that's worthless. So, I mean, I said this to you earlier, I want to work with everybody, because, you know what, I want a new Council on Aging building. Now, whether it's gonna be a gates or whether it's gonna be a separate standalone building, let's take a look at both options and see what's gonna be in the best interest, cost wise, what people want. And I think that's what the board's position is. We have staked out and said, this might be a good option to put it in gates, because it has space there, we have the building. But you know what, ultimately, the voters are gonna decide that. We're not. But I can't sit here and say it's not an open process. It is, and the information, this report was a draft. Once it's final, then we publish it. We don't publish drafts, and we're not trying to hide anything. People seem to think that. I mean, and the same thing with the building. You know, we're not gonna hide anything with the schemes, people are gonna take a look at it. We went through the library here, talking about spaces and how things were, you know, didn't make sense to us. We asked people what your thoughts were in the library, and that's what they're doing. We're gonna do the same.
That's all I ask, is that it be open?
It will be.
As an example, why haven't Derky Brown come to the COA?
So, let me clarify if I can, Mr. Chair, since there's some clarification that needs to be made, is there's been no contract awarded to Derky Brown. They've given us a proposal to provide services based on reprogramming, looking at the space of gates, based on this needs assessment study.
Didn't you say a few minutes ago that you had a draft from Derky Brown?
A proposal draft, yes.
Wasn't that put out in October?
No, I don't know what you're referring to, sir.
I have a letter from Derky Brown offering services, I think it was in August or September, to do this proposal, and wondering why you wouldn't have...
I honestly don't know what you're referring to. That's fine, they may have... What happened is, they were originally gonna do services, and then we didn't do anything because we waited until this needs assessment was completed, and then they gave another proposal about two weeks ago, based on what's in the needs assessment and the services they comply... I'm not gonna get into a debate with you, Dr. Price. I'm not gonna get into a debate with you. Well, you say it's a closed process, and you and I have never had a conversation.
Okay. Mr. Price, come on. This is what's going to be counterproductive for all of us trying to get a new senior center, okay? Gordon, I'm talking, please. I'll give you a chance to talk. We gotta work together on this, and this type of relationship is not gonna work. And I'm just telling you that upfront, and I'm not looking to do that. I wanna, I wanna see a brand-new building, whether it's shovel on the ground or at the gates, but we gotta take a look and see what the... I mean, they gotta go and take a look at it, come up, we're gonna talk to everybody about it, and then, you know what, what if everybody says, yeah, that's the great idea? Great, then we're having a violent agreement. But right now, we're at the preliminary stage to try to figure this out. We're not gonna get anywhere if we're gonna be having some animosity from both sides. And we're together on this, that's the bottom line. So, if there's a misunderstanding, we can clarify it.
Wasn't my recommendation when we spoke two weeks ago, that we get together with TA?
Yes, it was, and I said nothing, said nothing bad about it, but we've had four storms and like 60 inches of snow, that people are complaining about their sidewalks and their driveways. People have been here working hours after hour, Gordon, I mean, we can't get together because the town is all messed up with snow. I told you we will. I said Linda, myself, Tricia, Marty O'Toole, and I said, let's get together and talk.
I'm not blaming that it hasn't happened, I'm just saying, let's make it happen.
We're going to.
So that we can discuss these issues.
I absolutely agree. And I can promise you tonight, we will have a meeting, I would like to say, probably in what, two weeks, only to let me get through the snow, get through the budgets, and then sit down, because once we get the budgets done, we're golden until town meeting, and we've got plenty of time to sit and meet. That's all I ask. So, I'd say right now, beginning of March, the first week of March, probably be the best time to set something up. I'm not trying to delay anything, I'm just figuring. So, I promise you that, and I had, you know, we'll work with everybody on this.
Can I make this one up a comment?
Yes. If it's a good one.
You know, in terms of like Marshfield Center, I know that it was Linda that provided me with the information, but like, you know, for their center, the number of people that they have participating at center, I think, over 2,000 people, and I think, Linda, we're somewhere near around 400 participants in our center on a monthly basis, a regular basis. So, there's no doubt in my mind that if we have a center, and I think Jan, you know, basically, her data shows that, that if you have a center that's a center that is gonna be attractive for people who want to go to, they're gonna go. They're gonna support it. And so, we'll have 2,000 active participants in the senior center, no doubt in my mind, so.
I agree. I mean, no offense, I wouldn't want to go down to the senior center, the one we have now, maybe if it's turned into like a historical museum or something, but...
We must say, they do a great job with the services. With the limited... But you have 100% support of the board up here to get a new senior center, and there's nothing going on behind the scene. We want it open, we want... I know, you said open 47 times, so it's as open as we can make it, and there's nothing, there's no agenda. But we've got a new school, we've got a, you know, there's been a lot going on in this town in the last couple of months.
Other questions? All right, so thank you, and I will be, Luke, and Gordon, with you, to set up with Marty, Tricia, and Linda. Oh, you're on your budget, right? Okay. Thank you, folks. All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the Discussion Vote Public Safety Building Design Contract Services Amendment, Doran Whittier. Are they here? Lorraine, are they here? Public Safety Bill? Or Bill, are you doing that, or? Come on, Bill.
Yep.
They're not coming, it's just us?
No, it's just, they don't need to come, it's just a contract approval for the amendment. So, Derky Brown was hired to do schematic design for the public safety building, not full architectural. The way the original contract was bid is, we can maintain the same architect to bring us to full architectural. What you have attached is their amendments to that contract, plus some additional services that they've noted. We will take advantage of some of those in the email that's prefaced by the contract amendment, but probably not all. So, the way the executive order for the board's vote is worded, is it's gonna be for an amount not to exceed, and there is a typo on that, and it's my fault, Lorraine, not yours. It's actually an amount not to exceed 1.2 million.
Okay. I was gonna ask you that question.
So, some of those things on the list, like geotechnical analysis, septic soils, traffic, some we're gonna do, some we're not. So, this not-to-exceed number will get us to that.
Is it the 1.211, too? That was 1,211,000.
No, that was, would be if it included everything that's in the stuff below, John, and we're not gonna use everything. And I will, and some of those are negotiable with the architect. So, if we do a not-to-exceed, they'll be fine, and then, as you can see in the latter part of that email with this vote, then they can go and do development design and construction documents, so we can be on our timetable for construction of the public safety building.
Discussion from the board? Any questions? Motion?
So, do you want it to be 1.2?
Not to exceed 1.2.
Would the board's selectmen approve the public safety building design services contract for Doran Whittier up to and not to exceed $1.2 million?
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. O'Toole. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
And just, this is all included in what was already voted, it's not over and above in case people are confused on how we procure services and proposals.
All right. All right, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which happens to be a discussion, 2015 Beach Sticker Committee Recommendations. Where's our beach committee?
I don't think she's still here, you can check.
Jen, you coming up?
Who else is on that with Jen?
It's Maura, you're coming up? Come on up, you're part of the committee.
Jennifer.
See, Bill's on it.
Okay, so you're welcome.
You're missing the...
Yeah, sure. Do you want this one? I mean, it's on your desk, yeah, it wasn't in the backup. It's here, to my knowledge. She need a copy? All right. Does she have a copy? Oh, you have it, yeah.
So, I'll set this up while folks are getting ready. The beach committee met, we tried to do it once a year in advance of selling beach stickers. Beach stickers expire March 31st of every year, and also to respond to a couple of requests in the past year, I think, from individual board members, and also for the offices that mostly deal with the beach stickers, and beaches meaning recreation and the treasurer collector's office, but also since all of this is online, Bill gets pretty involved as well. So, we came up with some recommendations for the board, and would like to go over with you and get the sense of the board, so...
Do you want me to run through?
Yeah, go ahead. And that was passed out to you, I think you all have them.
So, I believe what we're running through tonight are the ones that the selectmen would have to vote on as policy changes, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what was discussed was the challenge of renters who need a beach sticker, and we're recommending a, where are we? Recommended that there would be a $50 weekly rental sticker with proof of rental agreement. I'm just gonna run through the list, and then we can decide which ones you have to vote on quite easier. A replacement sticker will be issued with only proof of former sticker for a new car at $10. The committee discussed the pros and cons of a daily sticker. I guess that was something that came from the board's selectmen, and it was recommended that we pilot this program this year with, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, offering a daily sticker for Peggety Beach and limiting it to 20 stickers at $20 that would be sold out of the Harbor Masters office. Continuing to limit the non-resident stickers to 200 stickers. And there will, there was, there will be a distinction made between resident and non-residents who own property, marginal land ownership, so less than 25% would not be eligible for a town sticker. Also, numerous residents want a beach sticker after beaches are closed, but before the sticker expires on March 31st. So, it's recommended from October 1st to February 1st, new residents would be able to purchase a sticker for $20. Homeowners, our homes that are owned by trusts, will limit the number of stickers that can be issued, specifically, only the person that's named on the trust could get a beach sticker. And the, we discussed having all beach policies in one document, and lastly, having the board should appoint a permanent beach committee moving forward on policies. I think that's everything, correct?
Did I catch it all, Julie? That was all of them?
Yes, that's all.
With Marshfield, do they get still the...
No.
No, they pay straight up then?
They, well, they can either get Hummerock, anybody can get a Hummerock only for $75, or a all sticker, all beaches sticker for 200.
How many do we sell those last year?
Non-resident or the Hummerock?
The 200 ones?
We only, we only allow, we only put out 200.
Right.
No, we only put out 200, $200 stickers.
Did we sell them all?
We sold 200 of those.
Oh, we did?
Yeah. I'll run through the sticker numbers if you want.
No, it's okay.
And Hummerock only, we sold 240.
240.
How many, how much is a parking ticket?
I think they're $50, but I'm not 100%.
$50 ticket, okay. And the police enforce that, right?
I was wondering if it'd be a good idea to have an area for those, the temporary stickers, if you will, since the enforcement's more difficult to have a particular area for those, so it'd make it easier for the cruiser to enforce it.
Do the police have to enforce it? Is that something that...
Who would?
I was gonna say, if the, you know, instead of having the police...
Sticker, you're good, they drive along, but with these things, they don't actually...
Instead of having the police enforce the, can we like have like...
When they don't have a sticker.
Yeah, when they don't have a sticker, if you have somebody, you know, like somebody who's at the beach, you know, part-time, somebody, they're there in the parking lot, knowing that... Instead of having a police officer go into the parking lot to spend time to do it, could we actually do it...
Oh, have a beach attendant or something.
A beach attendant do it. It's cheaper, it's less costly than having a police officer having to go do it, just a thought.
Yeah, well, that's in the realm of possibility if we want to do, yeah, absolutely.
Not that the police wouldn't do it, but, you know, obviously, it's a little priority if they've got something going on that's urgent, not gonna do it, but if you get somebody down there, hold does it. They have somebody standing out there and, you know, going in the parking lot, checking them, you gotta pay the person.
It was like years and years and years ago, but we did have it.
All right, so you want us to approve, these are the recommendations that you're asking us to approve?
On buying a sticker from October to February, is that so, like if you live near Peggety, you can park in Peggety Lot during that?
No, it's for people, new people who've moved to town, and they want to get a beach sticker, they want to be on the up and up, but they're saying, well, we have to pay for a beach sticker, it's only, we're only gonna be there once in a blue moon, because it's winter, so instead of charging them full $35, which we would for a person who's lived here all along and just never got around to getting a sticker, somebody coming in, we're trying to be welcoming and... somebody coming in, we're trying to be welcoming and...
This is actually a request by several of the realtors in town. So, new residents come, they want to go to the beaches, but they can't go and park in the beach because they don't have a sticker. And after the beach season, we really, like, we ran out of stickers this year, and we're not going to order new stickers after the beaches close typically in October.
So, why would they want to go down to the beach during that time? Because, I mean, there's no enforcement.
Well, because by, by the letter of the law, all the beaches require a sticker to park in them year-round.
Oh, it says year-round? So, a year-round sticker.
A year-round sticker.
So, there are those people out there.
Yeah, right, exactly.
There lies the problem.
Oh, okay, yeah, you got the weekly rental. That's the, good. That's one I think is going to be a good one. People who are renting for a week and have the opportunity to get a sticker to go for a week from parking lot or go from here to, you know, whether it's Minette to Sand Hills to, you know, Peggety or Hummer Rock.
I mean, a lot of them just walk to, from wherever they're renting, but they want to check out another beach.
They might, they may want to check something out, yeah. All right. So, do we need a motion? Is that what you're looking for? I like the last recommendation. This is something I was going to say to the, I want, after we finish the budget, is to set up a beach committee. Along...
Should we, should we appoint this?
That's what I was thinking, Jennifer, right? First, you're going to have to do the tour of duty here.
Six-year term.
All right, so.
Move to accept the beach sticker committee's recommendations.
Second. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Greg.
This is great.
And this money goes to the revolving?
You know, are you guys here? We can jump to the recreation. How about that?
Sure.
Chris wanted to go last.
After all those texts he's been sending?
All right, the number is 630. Sorry, folks, I'm here with you. So, let's see. Your request for this year is $135,867. And town administrators basically recommended $135,017, just a slight difference of about, less than 800 bucks.
This is the 630 account, right?
Yeah. Yeah, 630 is what I'm looking at, yeah. And just slightly from, just up slightly from 2015. The appropriation was $130,799. So, there's an incremental increase of about $5,000.
Lifeguards, probably?
We're still looking at, we're looking at 630 right now?
630.
630. So, that increase is COLA, just contractual, and also a $500 increase for a Wi-Fi bundle that the IT director has recommended for us.
And then on your beach budget, for this year, your recommendation was, her request was for $247,048. Administrator was recommended that you increase it to $260,050. My question, why did we have such a large number in 2015?
It was out of the parking lot improvements.
Parking improvements?
Parking lot improvements, they were grading in Peggety.
In Peggety, okay.
And, no, actually, and the money that's in FY15 is for Hummer Rock Beach Parking Lot that we're going to be doing this spring.
Oh, that's right. That's right. That's where the basketball court is.
In the basketball, which is coming out of CPC, but... Yeah, the increase is, so what you might have noticed in the beach revolving is that there's some new lines in there, but they're not new expenditures, other than the environmental testing. The beach revolving account is made up of six different departments. It's police, IT, administration, health, DPW, recreation. So, we worked closely with Nancy this year to kind of, you know, tease out that support services. If you looked at that number from last year was, you know, $25,000. That's now down to $10,000 because we took out and made specific lines, like environmental testing, portable sanitation, storage services. So, they had their own lines, and they weren't just lumped in. The increase in the budget is, the state's minimum wage went up as of January 1st, so there's a work of effect. So, lifeguards hourly rate went up, overtime for trash, the COLA, environmental testing, and then we're recommending a footbath for Egypt Beach.
And are we, Peggety Beach has the, the, it's like almost, not a shower, like a chair, it's a disabled, disability? Was that used last year? Or is that, okay. Or is it this year that it's being used?
Nope, it was a...
Questions from the board? Yeah?
Is that the one you're talking about that we saw? That's nice.
Tricia came up with that. She saw that last year at the MMA, and I said, "Good idea." And that's how we got it.
Actually, I think Jennifer had already added in her budget, and I came back, and I said, "Hey, what about this?" And you went, "Yeah, that's what I was telling you." All right, so.
The other thing with the beaches I should have brought up, we're not completely ready to share it, but is more awareness around sharks. Tricia has been on this since the fall, and we're working with the Harbor Master Police Natural Resource Officer Fire to create a new sign down at the beach to make residents aware of sharks. The other thing is we're working with the Atlantic White Shark Conservancy down in the Cape. And they created, through a grant, a brochure that we can disseminate with the beach stickers about shark awareness and dorsal fins and how to identify a sunfish versus a great white. And the whole, like, educating people about seals and to stay away from them.
Stay away from them.
So, I kind of, with, the more I'm learning about it, the more it's something that the town really does need to take seriously, that they're not going away. So, that is something, too, that we'll be rolling out for the summer.
That's good.
Just a quick question, and Nancy, you're probably, on the budget line for beach, it's 260050. And in the beach revolving one, it's 2499. Is that, are those two supposed to tie out, or are they?
I have to go back and check the difference for you.
Okay, so, this was probably done way before the other one. I mean, it's nominal, but those two?
It might be the footbath, because the footbath was in play and then out of play.
Okay. But it will be the 260 is the, is the final one. And there's 300, oh, no, $160,000 in excess in that account later.
Right, which we try to build to roll over to do meaningful capital.
Right.
Because, like, we're still over on Bailey's Causeway One and stuff. And, you know, we eventually want to do a bathhouse or something. That's rollover.
Sand Hills would be a great place for that.
Now, moving forward, get this.
Finally got a building name now. There you go. Sorry. Any other questions?
No.
Folks, thank you. It's excellent. We'll be voting on it in our last three weeks or two weeks. No, actually, it depends on what we're going to do. All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We'll turn to 650, beautification. Donna, how are you?
Fine, thanks, all right.
Good. It's 650 right after recreation. This is pretty much level-funded for the most... Well, it's not level. It's actually an increase slightly of 500 bucks. But it's $20,000, so...
$20,000. Are the increases due to the fact that in this past year, 2014, our plant prices went up 10%? That just about, that's about $500. And that's a 2.5% increase roughly. So, we felt it was prudent to request that much.
You guys do a great job. There's no doubt about it, what you have. Any questions from the board?
Are there any new spaces? Or is it still the, I mean, are there the islands?
There is some flux in the spaces. The only new spaces we've had is really, we've tried to take over some responsibility here at Town Hall. Otherwise, it's, recruitment is very hard. It's very hard to get in touch with people who might want to do this during the summer. Water especially is hard, right, Maura?
Water's hard.
Maura's one of our caretakers. So, expansion is not something we look to do.
Yeah, it's great work. I mean, it looks beautiful in those areas, but you see the people out there working hard on a hot Saturday afternoon.
I think, I think that's where one of our favorite Facebook pages could be really utilized well, is to try to recruit folks for your beautification, since it's volunteer-based, you know, and...
We actually had somebody suggest that tonight at our meeting, that we could use that, so...
I bet you'd find some folks that would come forward.
That's a great idea. I mean, we'll try anything.
Exactly.
Donna, thank you.
Thank you.
Donna, thanks for everything.
Thank you for waiting for us, too. Going to move on to the next one, which happens to be 691. David, historical society, ball? Good evening. It is 691, so we need to move over to... 691, there it is. And here, here. So, let's see. Request is for $14,478. The town administrator's recommended $13,000. Last year, we appropriated $11,350. And seems pretty, pretty straightforward. Looks good. Things are, buildings are holding up from the storms, definitely, right?
They are. You don't hear really any talk at all about the poor condition of your historical buildings. And that's because, frankly, the historical society is constantly taking a look at them and dealing with small problems that would become very big problems if that wasn't happening. Just so everybody knows, there are seven historical buildings that are owned by the town, and those are the Cudworth House, Situate Lighthouse, Mann House, the Massachusetts Humane Society Boathouse, Lawson Tower, the Lawson Gates, and the Bates House. And the rest are owned by the society that we deal with and support through our own funding. So, our request is $14,378. Looks to me like the town administrator's recommending $13,000. The biggest change in the request from this year to from last year is that we are requesting $3328 in oversight services. It's gotten to the point where myself and others are spending more and more time dealing with repair issues, acting as clerk of the works, putting together the multiple field trips that are taking place at the historical sites. And I'm just talking about the town-owned, it's not, not ours. We feel very strongly that that has to be included this year. Frankly, if I was doing this budget today rather than last November, I think I would have put in around $5,000. But I didn't.
So, who would this go to? Specifically, what is that for?
It is for any oversight services. It could be almost anything. It could be acting as clerk of the works for various repair projects. It could be for dealing with field trips from all the requests that we get every year. Tonight, I just went, I just went through this document, which is the field trips that we conducted last, starting last April and ended in November. Every place, you say that there's a highlighter, that is a town-owned building that we had a field trip to. It goes on page after page after page.
So, what you're suggesting is that whoever goes and opens a door for them and stays there while the field trip's going on gets paid?
Well, it's, it's not just that. It's, it's a lot of work putting these field trip requests together. We have every single school in Situate course that goes through these buildings. We have usually two or three school groups from Norwell. We have the United States Lighthouse Society this year come to the lighthouse in September. It takes a lot of time. You've got to put together, it's not just a matter of opening up the door and say, "Go ahead and take a trip." You've got to have docents on site. Most of these field trips will be two to three hours when they do occur. Oftentimes, you will have a request, say, from Havley School to go to three or four sites in a day.
No, my, my point isn't not that the work is just opening the door. My point is, so someone from the society or something who's go, who's taking their time to...
You're really looking for a part-time salary.
To pay that person $12 an hour or something to do it. Is that what, is that what that line's for?
That's, that's pretty much it. We're basing it on what we pay all our other employees. Generally speaking, that's $16 per hour. I started keeping track this year, I have it here somewhere, of the time spent since January 1, for example. It's already up to about 18 hours since January 1, and things, and this time of the year, not much is going on, obviously. But we've had mice issues at the Mann House. We've had some problems at the lighthouse with water line freeze-ups. So, it's constant. It doesn't, it isn't just in the summertime. It's, it's year-round.
Is there, Dave, when, I know the schools probably not, but is there a charge? I mean, because these are historical buildings, like, you go to Boston, usually you've got to pay to get into some of these buildings.
If it's a school group from Situate, we don't charge anything.
School you don't, but other...
A lot of times, the schools will own their, will own their own, give us a donation. If it's an out-of-town school, we charge usually, depends on how many sites they want to go to. $3 a head for a couple of sites, $2 if it's just one site. And that's, frankly, just to cover the costs of air conditioning or heat or whatever, whatever time of year you're talking about.
That's a fair, that's a fair request, and, you know, take a look because of the, for costs. But I know we can't do it this year, looking at it, but I know it's something to think about.
What if beautification came in and said they wanted... They get paid $16 an hour?
For example, we could get, I could get a call tonight from one of the alarm companies. There's an alarm going off at the, at the Mann House. "We need somebody to come over there." The fire department gives me a call. "We need you to come over there. It's 11 o'clock at night." And that's, that's happened. I mean, there's a lot of responsibilities done. Seven historical buildings. Most towns have one or two at the most.
Some of that, some of that stuff should be handled by the facility.
Kevin, I would think, yeah.
That type of stuff.
Frozen pipes, certainly.
Anything structural. I can understand what you're saying with the touring, if you will, of the facility. But definitely Kevin should be handling that. That's his job.
For the pipe stuff.
Yeah, and if there's alarm or anything.
Frankly, I, you know, I, I don't think Town Hall would want to take on what we, what we do. I mean, you would be amazed. They'll be spending some of their days, half the day, dealing with this kind of thing.
Well, let's, if we gave in your request, what would, how would you just have the people that are doing it now just be able to pay them, Dave?
The way I would envision it, we would, we would let our treasurer know how much time was spent on the town-owned building. And maybe every three months, she would request payment from the town.
And this has been volunteer work for the last decade?
Hundred years.
Hundred years.
It's hard to ask people to go out at 10 or 11 at night to, you know, meet the alarm company there, but...
Unless one of you guys wants to go out there.
John, you take the lighthouse. I'll do the Mann, I'll do the Mann House. That's near my house. Lorraine, that's right around the corner from you.
You got the Mann, there you go. All right, well, let's take, that's...
He mentioned it, and let's see if we can, you know, we're not voting this number right now, so...
I mean, and if you, if you'll take a look at the total budget, frankly, $14,000, that works out to roughly $2,000 per building. How many people would only spend $2,000 on their house every year for maintaining the sites? And most of that money, and the vast majority of it goes to alarm systems, heat, and light. That's what it is. Not a whole lot of maintenance. Frankly, the amount of money that we get from CPC covers some of the costs occasionally for the, for the bigger maintenance issues. Our position is you're getting a very good deal for the amount of buildings that you have. That's why I didn't have any interest in a council and aging building earlier.
Yes.
You didn't see a snap?
Recognizing.
If you look across natural gas, FY15, it was 1,500 appropriated, and then requesting 1,500, town administrator's looking at 900...
$1,500, town administrator's looking at 900. Why would it be such a big drop?
I think when she... She's not here, but I think when she was looking at this, we get these...
There's $600 right there.
Yeah, we get these monthly reports from the town as to what the amount was that was spent and the amount of money that's left. And I had a call from the gas company last October, maybe, asking why the gas consumption at the Mann House was zero for the last four or five months. And they wanted to know if the meter had been taken out. Well, the reason it was zero is that it's just gas in the main part of the building, and it's not on from roughly March until October. So, it was a very small amount. This... I wouldn't want to look at the bill right now, frankly. I'm sure it's quite high, even though it's only being heated at 45 degrees, but it's still, you know, going to be going up. So, I don't think the 900s would cover it. That's kind of what I'm saying.
I'm seeing the 600 there, so...
Fiscal 14-year date was $418. So, they always spend $418 in fiscal 14 for gas. That's why it was reduced.
Is that because you might not have a tenant in there, or is that separate utilities?
There is a tenant in the apartment, and she pays.
Okay.
All right, well, why don't we do this, Dave? We're not voting on it, Tom. We'll take a look at that and see.
You know, as I said, I mean, the society feels very strongly about this.
Appreciate it very much.
Very good.
Fire station.
He already thought about it.
All right, can we move on to the next one, which is the conservation coastal resource? Patrick, how are you? That happens to be 171.
You guys have been here longer than us. I'm just enjoying the time, just in case. It's my budget.
All right. So, your budget. All right, the request for this year is $129,296. The town administrator's recommended $128,721. It's basically a difference of about 500 bucks. Last year, your appropriation was $122,529. And so, it's gone up, obviously, by about $6,000, almost. So, it must be probably increasing salaries.
Yeah, I think 93% of the budget is salaries, and it's cowl on my salary, and Nancy's comes through another source.
So, I'll stick around with Laura, because Laura actually has me in her budget. I'm in the planning budget, but I'm under conservation, so it's...
Nancy, why do we do that?
The grant.
The grant is in planning?
The grant is specified, Laura. So, we set Nancy up in planning, but poor Nancy answers to two masters and hands foot personnel. Good thing she can juggle.
I like the way...
Only two?
Other questions from the board?
No, I have five.
That's it?
Good job.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry to keep you waiting this late.
Good work.
Appreciate it. Moving on to the next one. Laura, you're up. Board of Health is next. Jen?
She's on deck.
All right. So, Laura, it looks like the planning board recommendation, or your request for this year... Not planning board, planning board.
Yeah.
Is $175,618. Town administrator's recommended $173,185. Basically, a difference of about over $2,000. Your appropriations for last year was $168,833. And that seems to be due to...
Did you hear the whole... Okay, maybe it's part of it. I think part of it might be that Nancy started in October?
July.
In July. So, there might have been a couple of weeks there that she wasn't there for the beginning of the year.
It seems like that's basically it.
We had one position upgraded in my department, and I think that's basically it.
Questions from the board?
Nope. Just note that it looks like 35% is from that FEMA grant, and the rest of it is in that department.
Thank you very much. Thanks, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Jennifer, come on up. You're next. Donna, you're on deck. This is 510. By the way, Jennifer, you've done a great job, certainly with the shelter, but all preparing for the storms and things. One thing. 510, Board of Health, there we go. So, this is the first time you're doing your budget, Jen, right?
Correct.
So, you haven't done your statements, or, you know, your budget or anything. I won't put you through it, don't worry. Tricia's not here, I was like, oh, sad. All right, so your request this year is for $136,407. Town administrator's recommended $136,282, a difference of basically 200 bucks. Last year, the appropriation was for $139,000, so this is a decrease from last year's, as well as from fiscal year '14. I think that's probably given to the different things. So, seems pretty straightforward. Anything you want to add? No?
Nope.
So, the part-time salaries, those are for, is that the summer?
That's for our public health nurse.
Oh, right, right.
She issues the shots and stuff.
She does the flu clinics, the illness reporting throughout the year, surveillance clinics, and then she does blood pressure clinics every month at Lincoln Park. Does home visits. She gets... She does a lot in her few hours, right.
And Nancy, the technical services was 11 last year and 4 this year. Did I get go to a different department?
That was the $7,500 that we had switched in the budget this fiscal year for technical services, so that we could outsource some of the work that Jennifer didn't have a license for yet. And she's got most of her licenses now, so we don't need to do that for the upcoming years, since like the soil...
Oh, right, right. Last year, we had to outsource it. This year, we don't.
We're outsourcing it like the year we're in. Because she's getting all her licenses, because she's only been there six months. It feels like it's not for our...
Most of that is work done by Ralph Cole to supplement the septic inspections and to assist in that effort, both in the field and with some of the plans in the office.
Ralph's teaching you that end of your job, I heard?
He is.
That's good.
Yeah, so when I first started, he was essentially doing the septic inspections...
So, you're doing the perk testing? Is that what you're learning from Ralph, or...
I am learning the perk tests from Ralph, the oversight, the soil evaluator, identifying the different layers. But it started out, you know, when I first got here, I was so engrossed in the beaches that he essentially went out, you know, did all the inspections, provided, you know, reports back to our office. And it has slowly transitioned into either I call him or he calls me when one of us gets a phone call for, you know, it'd be a bottom excavation, or a final inspection, or a perk test, so that I'll have the opportunity to go with him and observe in the field while he's, you know, still technically doing the work.
Great.
He's been a great help, a good teacher.
He said, "I've heard a lot of good things about you," through him, and there's another engineer as well. Keep up the good work. Thank you, Jennifer.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Other questions?
No.
Not right now.
Very well. Thank you, Jennifer, appreciate it.
Thanks, Jen. Thank you.
I have a lot of questions for the next one, though.
543.
That's a good idea.
See what you get for being fresh?
543.
John, can you detail the training line in your budget?
We've got a request this year, Don, it's for $214,934. Town administrator's recommended $211,474. It's a difference of about $3,000, over $3,000. Last year's request was appropriated for $255,142. It's gone down. This year's request significantly.
There's two lines.
There was funds encumbered for a case that was being litigated, and that case has since finished.
That's what it was for, okay. And so...
So, that wasn't in the original budget, though?
Correct. We held it over from the year prior.
So, the original budget was $220. And then the support is down? How do you get that number? Is based on actuals?
I'll let Don speak to it.
On the...
The support.
Oh, yes. That's what it is, is we were at... We were trending upwards around... I was looking that probably this time, we're going to be around 25 to 30 cases. That ended up leveling off. We went more to federal claims, which is, again, me submitting claims on behalf of veterans, them getting the claims, and it's being paid by the federal side, so they're not on that support system. So, that, right now, that seems to be the trend. That could change. Again, it's very difficult for me to look into the future, where we're going to be, but, you know, we do a pretty good... A crystal ball, I call it, and we've been doing well on it the last three years, so...
How many total people are we helping now?
On our Chapter 115, right now, we're at 19, down from 22. That could change over the next month to up to 25.
So, does that... And then do you add 30 more for the federal side?
The federal side, again, it doesn't come out of our budget.
But are you helping those... You're still helping those people?
I help them. I probably average federal cases. I could average easily four cases a week.
Four new cases?
Four, yeah. I could easily do seven. Today, I did two, just this morning, that walked in. So, I don't know what's going to come through the door. I get a little gauge with the new appointment system that I can get a gauge on what might be coming through the door, but I still have walk-ins. I could be doing three cases that day and then three walk-in.
Right.
Which is a good thing. I'm helping, you know, they're coming in and they're seeing me, and they're using the service and getting what they deserve, so...
I was just going to say, Donna, when you first started, it's kind of ramped up. Now, is it kind of leveling off? Is that what...
The Chapter 115 cases ramped up.
Okay.
The federal cases, they were... There was none being done. And now, it's... Like, again, it probably takes up 70, 75% of my time.
But then the funds don't come from locally, they come from... How does that work?
That's, again, that's a claim... It's either a service or a non-service connected claim that's going in. I'm doing the paperwork, so I'm doing all the man-hours for them. I'm submitting that to the government. The government's going to make that determination whether they get it or they don't get it. Right now, again, it's been a high success rate on that, but they don't go on our books. In other words, they're not going under our programs. They're going under a federal program. So, it's federal money. And again, the good thing about that, too, which you don't see, and we're trying to get the state to do this for us, is that that money comes back into the town. So, if they're winning these claims, they're getting a pension or a compensation check. That's going to them. So, that money is being used, if they live in here in Situate locally, it goes back into the community. That's something we can't... We're trying to get them to get a number on that, so we can put that out, so the community knows X amount of money is probably coming back into the town, so...
And Nancy, we get reimbursement for the money that we pay out.
75%.
Does that come through the cherry sheet, or how does that come in?
It's on the cherry sheet, and we get a quarterly, and it lags about a year behind.
Roughly, again, every quarter, we're probably getting in close around 22, a little over 22 grand. And again, she's right, it's about, yeah, a year behind, 12 months.
And all of Don's filing now, it used to all be a paper system, it's all online. All their submissions have to be online.
Good. Any other questions? Donna, thank you. Get in touch with you, I will, to meet with you, too. A little delayed with the snow. All right, let's move on to the last one. Linda, come on down. Council on Aging.
I thought we were going to put this one off. Next meeting?
Hi.
So, let's see. The department requested $340,867. Town administrator's recommended $314,239. Last year, we appropriated $317,000, almost $318,000. And so, there's a difference of approximately... $26,000?
It's a big part of that, the repair. There's mine, which was $26,000 in fiscal '15, and there's only $4,000 in fiscal '16. Excuse me for interrupting, Linda, if you run Chinese, and that was because in fiscal '15, we had an HVAC project. It was less than $25,000 per cap of project that was built in there, so it's one and done.
Questions from the board?
Just if you can explain that $22,000 for the paratransit, is that... That's not GATRA.
It is GATRA.
It is GATRA. And we use that for the ride and...
The length of ride. It's the out-of-town medical transportation. It is reimbursable, but we have it in the budget. We pay it out, we get reimbursed by GATRA on a monthly basis.
And where does that go?
Up to...
General fund receipt.
Okay. And that's the money that we're hoping to use to expand into the trolley?
Potentially. They had raised us this year, and with their budget, we'd gone from maybe something like $75,000, I think it was, to 100, just in terms of what they had to offer us for what we could spend monthly or annually.
Yeah, we met with them, Shaw, I don't know if they...
Yes.
Three, four, five years ago.
Florence, right.
Tricia has met with them recently, too.
Yeah, I know we're doing stuff recently, but we were close to getting something done, and then they couldn't do it. So, it'd be great if we could get something done.
It would.
Coincides with one of the main topics.
It does.
Right. All right. Any other questions?
No.
Linda, thank you.
No. Thank you.
That completes our budget review for tonight. Let's move over to business. Discussion for a one-day liquor license for Gar Hall on March 22, 2015, for lavishly done, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
A bridal shower. Motion? Move to grant lavishly done a one-day beer and wine license at Gar Hall on May 22, 2015, from 1:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. for a bridal shower.
Motion by Mr. Vignani.
March 22.
What did I say?
You said May.
I said May.
Just so, in case Lorraine put...
Motion by Mr. Vignani for March 22.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I want a copy of the tape.
You said an aye, right? Next one is an agenda item to discuss a vote drain layers license. And this is for...
Jones.
Jones Contracting?
Jones Contracting, Inc.
Motion?
And this is a... Is this a renewal?
This is a renewal.
Move the Board of Select and Approve a 2015 Drain Layers License for Jones Contracting, Inc.
Seconded. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Moving on to correspondence. And I think there is some correspondence. Who's our clerk, Mr. O'Toole?
Which one would you like?
Well, let's see. We got National Historic... Is that the one?
George Kelly and...
Can I just paraphrase?
National Register of Historic Places, that one?
National Register of Historic Places, that one?
Oh, yeah, this is the First Baptist Church. Basically, they are going to be placed on the National Historic Registry for the First Baptist Church. Now, it doesn't impact, you know, it does impact what they can do to some degree, but it's not going to impact, you know, like if they wanted to paint it or do things like that aesthetically, but it also opens up opportunities for them to get grants, which is a great thing. So this is a letter to Pastor Leo Christian, designating First Baptist Church on the Massachusetts, right, yeah, National Registry of Historic Places. All right, that's that one. What's the next one we have?
That one, the commission meeting about 1:00 on Wednesday, March 11th. That they're inviting the selectmen to...
What, what are you talking about?
I'm sorry. Which one is that?
On the First Baptist Church, they're inviting...
Oh, okay.
Oh, so we're back to the Baptist Church.
Yeah, they're inviting the selectmen to historic commission meeting about 1:00 on March 11th.
At the church? Where is it?
Meeting is...
1 p.m.
Oh, here it is.
At the Mass State Archives in Georgetown.
Oh, okay. All right.
Well, that next one's just a...
And then the next one is a...
I think it's important to clarify the next one.
Go ahead.
Well, I just, you know, we have a letter from a resident, Mr. George P. Kelly, speaking to us a little bit about our decision to approve the Toll Brothers to access to sewer and references that his concern that we have put them ahead of other residents, which we certainly have not. So I think it's really important that we continue to clarify that, that nobody's jumped the line, if you will, and that we have a current engineering study going on to reevaluate our current phase of sewer expansion, and that should be coming up soon, correct?
Absolutely, nobody has leapfrogged. And frankly, that's, that's long short. The bigger issue is going to be the next phasing in and whether or not, which phase is going to get phased first, whether it's the one that was pursuant to the report that, was it a report or, is it, Sean, you can help me out on this. It was the phasing in, which was a result of the...
Priority districts.
Priority, but there was the whole sewer issue back in the 90s when the federal governments or the court injunction said you had to moratorium on searing and consequently we ended up doing phases. And that's a part of the phasing issue right now that we're going to be taking a look at, so, yeah. No, Mr. Kelly's wrong.
Well, he's, you know, I mean, it looks like that from the outside, you know, here's a new, someone's getting a new house and they're getting tied in when they haven't, so...
Well, the fact is, the new, the money that we're going to be getting from these hook-ins are going to allow us to have more capacity and maybe do another phase on top of the two that are already in the works.
Identify more leaks in the system, things like that, so...
All right. And I think that takes care of it, right?
There's one more.
Yeah, one more.
This one's from Mr. Hopkins.
Yeah.
All right, well, it just says, I know that you said I would keep you informed concerning my payment plan to the town of Situate. I'm sorry that I neglected to do so. I was concerned with the replacement of the roof on the building and remodeling to apartments which had been vacated so that I could start collecting rents in order to keep up the payments. I have now rented the two apartments. Mr., and so is he planning on paying the town his, his taxes? Is that basically what we're doing?
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't... He's just, he's trying to set up a payment.
Right.
So that's it, all right.
Well, his license was not renewed for his car service because of what's owed to the town.
Right.
He's looking for your support in letting him have his license.
Let's see, the unfortunate part is if you haven't paid, that's the point of licensing, is to make sure that you pay your license, because once we give a license, they get it for a full year. And so the point is we want people to pay before they get their license. The policy's been there before.
Right.
Well, if, if he'd have to request to have a, a meeting in front of us if he wants to have that discussion. Obviously...
We need the facts. We don't really have any other facts with money, you know?
All right, aside from that, approval of minutes? Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to, move the board selectman approve the board selectman meeting minutes for January 20th, 2015.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by...
Second.
Ms. Curran? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good. And then that gets us to, any other business? Anybody have any other business they want to share?
Just quickly, I want to thank all the people out there working hard, the firefighters, the DPW people, the people in Town Hall that are tirelessly working for three straight weeks to get us through this, and it's a pain for some of the residents, particularly as we try and widen the roads and you're getting big chunks of snow in your freshly shoveled driveway. Unfortunately, that's happening when we're widening the roads and we apologize for it, but unfortunately, there's not much we can do. So bear with us, winter will be over in 42 days or something, and then we'll celebrate on the beach.
31, hopefully.
31 days. One other thing, tomorrow, if you're home and your kids aren't in school, at 1:00 at the high school, the boys' basketball team is playing North Quincy. It's their last game of the year, so if you're available, go over and watch it. They've made the playoffs and don't know the schedule yet, but they are going there. And also, the wrestling team, there's, I think there were at least, I hate to say it because I probably don't know them all, but I know that there were two or three wrestlers that made it, won the sectionals that are going on to the States. I know Mark Gentile, Noah Bucher, and I think Liam Healy all had great years this year and are going forward in wrestling. Those are the winter sports that I know.
All right? All right?
I just have one update for you. I think I let John know that the planning board voted to indefinitely postpone the 40R district for this town meeting because they want to do a little bit more due diligence with, I think, some of the business owners, property owners down there, both on Countryway and on the other side of the tracks, as well as the design review concerns I think that everybody brought up here.
Got a little on, Sean? Couple of, this is an annual thing we get, and I'm sure you guys got them there across the hall. And I just, just picked it up earlier, so I don't know, is it, is it Wamptuck School, guys? Is it? And this one grade, one particular classroom that thanks us every year, that we're doing a great job keeping the town in such good shape, is really excited to go to a new middle school. So this person's quite happy, you know, someone's happy with the job we're doing. Another one, dear Mr. Harris, thank you so much for your every, everything you do for, what's it, I can't quite read.
For instance, the middle school.
The middle, all right, another one, another one for the middle school. Happy Valentine's Day. Well, thank you very, very much to those children that took the time to do that.
Sean, all I can say is that you and I are probably the only two favorites of the board.
I know.
Other ones across the hall in here, like Japers.
Yours are from girls.
Thank you so much for making Situate such an awesome town. That's what I got, making it awesome. The new middle school will be great, but I don't know who it's from.
Who's the teacher, do you know?
Is it Mom?
And I have...
Oh, that's nice.
Thank you for helping make Situate such a great place. I am so excited for the new middle school and thanks for all the supplies we need. Sincerely, Emma, Harris. That was very kind of Emma, and...
That's quite an artistic one, that's.
Very good, little sweet tart, sweetheart and all the stuff, and these are great. Aside from that, I just want to report, I did go as the representative for the town of Situate to Soucy-Enbree, our sister city. I was there for about four days. I left last Saturday, like this past Saturday, the Saturday before, and I returned Wednesday night. And I have to tell you, it was a great experience. I got to meet the, the mayor over in Soucy-Enbree. They have 35 councilors, so the city is 25,000, 26,000 residents. It's basically five miles south of Paris. It's like being in Milton. They have 35 councilors, they, they have so many layers of government bureaucracy. Basically, they have a town, then they have county government, then they have state government, and then they have the national, all within five miles of Paris. It's, it's pretty impressive of the bureaucracy they have. They were flabbergasted to know that there are only five board members here. They kept calling me the mayor, even though I kept saying, I'm not the mayor, I'm the chairman of the board, I'm sure. I said, I said, yeah, you got the wrong guy, it's Joe Norton. Joe, if you're listening. So it was a great experience and I have to say that it's not just for the students who are doing an exchange, it's actually for the residents of Situate. There's arts, the artists are going in May, I think it's about 15 of them from Situate to go across to Paris. They're coming in July, and then again in October. And I have to tell you, it's a...
Pretty neat.
It's a good thing that this town has, people don't know about it, they should explore it. It's just a great opportunity, so, for the town, for people, so...
And thank you. It's, it takes a lot out of your life to get on a plane and fly to Europe.
Right.
So I can put it out there, my wife wasn't with me, my kids weren't with me, and I actually had to stay with the deputy mayor and his wife, you know, so it's not like you get to stay on your own.
Or Vegas.
But they were very kind and very hospitable and it was good.